To our Union Township trustee meeting, if you could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Ms. Campbell, let the record reflect. All three trustees are present. And before we begin, so far I have one public comment card. If you'd like to speak and have any public comments, there's comment cards in the back. Just fill those out for us so we have your name and address for the record. Happy, I guess, Special Election Day. Is that right? And polls are open for what, till 7:30, I believe?
Yep.
All right. So you've still got time to vote if you have not voted? Either yes or no vote, either way. So, okay. Ms. Campbell, was there a correspondence tonight?
Yes, sir. I have one. It is a liquor permit. And I'll read. It's a transfer of ownership. It's transferring from Shivom, S-H-I-V-O-M Incorporated, Doing Businesses County Beverage, 528 Old State Route 74, Union Township, Cincinnati, Ohio 45244. And that's transferring to Maakali, M-A-A-K-A-L-I Express LLC, Doing Businesses County Beverage, 528 Old State Route 74, Union Township, Cincinnati, Ohio 45244. Police Department has no objections. Mr. Floudy has sent over the accompanying zoning that it's in, has the proper zoning, so there's no issues with that.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you.
Great correspondence. Next is our special presentations, which I'm very excited to hear about the State Route 32 construction. And then Ms. Ayers, would you like to go ahead and present our guest, please?
Thank you, sir. With us this evening is Charlie Rowe. Are we Charles, Charles?
Yeah.
Row, sorry. My apologies. Mr. Rowe is working with ODOT and is helping run the project on 32 and State Route 74. I asked him to be here tonight. We've gotten a lot of questions and there's been a lot going on with road construction and road closures around the township. Charlie can present part of that. He is, the other part of this construction has been with the Claremont County Engineer and the Transportation Improvement District, so that won't be in Charlie's bailiwick tonight. But I appreciate him being here and hopefully this will help get some information out with everyone. He is going to speak this evening but does have some childcare issues, so he's not going to be able to stick for the whole meeting. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Susan.
Mr. Rowe, real quick, before you begin, ballpark, what time do you need to be out of here?
As soon as I'm done talking and answering your all's questions.
Roger that. You got it. Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Rowe.
Soccer practice started three months ago. All right. I'm Charlie Rowe. I am the District Design Engineer, so we represent all of southwest Ohio. Prior to this, I was also the project manager for these group of projects here in Eastern Corridor Segment 4A. So as we all know, it's under construction. We are currently building the new interchange at Bock Buxton. This will be a full movement interchange and it will eliminate all signals and at-grade crossings on State Route 32. So you'll go from 32 to 275 all the way to Bauer Road without having any traffic signals or at-grade intersections. So currently, we are, I'm sure a lot of people have driven through, we can see that the bridge is built. So now we have a little bit of traffic, a few traffic switches that need to happen to allow us to finish up the ramps that go down in front of Holman and in front of Jeff Wyler, just to allow us to get the full traffic movement. So, starting Friday, Friday into Saturday, we are starting a very large traffic switch. We did send out all the PI stuff today on ODOT social media, so this document is out there as well on Facebook. I'm sure the county engineer's office will share it as well. So what's going to happen is currently, we'll start at the bottom, number six, that is the new Bock Buxton Road. Currently, you're only going northbound, so if you're coming from Klepper, like Chipotle, when you go down the new Klepper, you turn left, you're on the new road. If you're coming south from 32 down towards Klepper, you're on the old. So starting Friday, probably Friday morning, both directions, both directions of traffic will be on the new road. And then by Saturday morning, we will have the new overpass open. So you will continue from Marion, the traffic signal at Marion, up to the next traffic signal, you'll be able to turn right to go east on 32. This will be an ad lane on 32 and it will take you, just continue east. You will not have access to turn left on Old 74 from that ramp, that traffic signal. So that's very important. If you're coming west on 32, you would take the new ramp that'll be open, that's designated ramp number four in the exhibit. Then you get up to the top, you can turn left to go to Bock Buxton and go back down to Klepper or down towards the high school, wherever you're going to go. You, so if you go a little bit farther, you have number seven. So that segment between the traffic signal, Old 74, is not going to be open yet. And then we have number one, which also is on a section of Old 74 between Kitty and Dogwood. Those will remain closed until October 1st. So October 1st, both of those will open. We're still waiting to get some gas lines out of the way, so we physically can't open the road until they're done. Also, we have number five shown in blue. That is the start of the new ramp to go from the interchange to go west on 32. So that would be an ad lane and will be the third lane on westbound 32. We can't get, finish constructing it until we close Elik just due to conflicts. So we are going to put a temporary little slip ramp from that ramp over to Elik to allow residents and business people to get to Holman Motors, Elite Sports. There's a Sharefax Credit Union there and a bunch of other businesses up and down 74. So we did add that in to allow that connection to happen. So if you're coming east on 32 from like the mall going east to get to the new Bock Buxton Road, while we're finishing the ramp, that's not shown, you'll be able to make a right turn at Wyler and then come down and go over to Marion and go back over to the new road. It's shown as number six. That will change, so then, so all that happens Friday, Friday into Saturday. And then September 1st, the number two does go away. We have to get rid of all the traffic there to finish that connection back into Old, or to 32. So to get to, if you're coming east on 32 and you want to get to any of the businesses up on Old 74, you'll either have to make a turn at Glen Estee or go on down to Olive Branch Stone that can turn around and come back. That is the, those are going to be, those are going to be the two designated detour routes to make that movement. The good news is, all of this is slated to be done by Thanksgiving. The interchange is estimated to be open and fully functioning by the week of Thanksgiving.
Say what you just said one more time.
So the full interchange, all four ramps, all movements.
Including Glen Estee-Whitlinsville?
No, the Glen Estee-Whitlinsville, I'll get to that in a second.
Okay, fair enough.
So the Glen Estee-Whitlinville overpass is not part of this project. So this interchange, all four legs, all final configurations will be open by Thanksgiving. That being said, I mean, if we have a crazy early snowstorm or torrential flooding, like that's going to delay that. But assuming normal weather delays, we'll have it open by Thanksgiving. So you did bring up the next project, which is Glen Estee, the overpass at Glen Estee. That project is set to, is currently being advertised, so it's fully funded, designed, everything. And the bids will be opened on October 12th. So then construction will start probably the first of the year. We'll start seeing some work out there. And then by the end of '25, the new overpass would be open.
End of 2025?
Yes.
So two and a half more years?
Correct.
Of Glen Estee-Whitlinville being shut down?
Correct.
Got it. I'm sure the people were very excited.
End of 2025.
End of 2025. Okay. All right. Fair enough. Okay.
Charlie, what was the reason on closing that now if we're just bidding it? I know they're...
So, so we had, we had, we have a very large group of projects here. It's called Coin Under Eastern Corridor Segment 4A. Total construction cost was 150, 160 million. There was no way to get all of that. So we kind of took a need-based approach, if you will, tried to figure out what was our biggest need, and that was the safety issues. The section, the intersection at Glen Estee and 32, and Bock Buxton, and then Fayard, those were like the three of the top nine worst intersections in the state, based on the 2017 data when we got all the funding. So we made the decision to build the interchange, get rid of all the access, or all the access and at-grade intersections with State Route 32 to alleviate the safety issues. So then we went through our regular process to finish it and the funding. County's been a huge help. We've teamed up to get all the funding. We were able to finish design, buy in all the right-of-way, and like I said, it'll start construction next year.
Thank you. Mr., is it R-O-W-B, Rowe or Rowe?
Rowe.
Rowe. Okay. Okay. I don't want to make that mistake. Okay. Thank you very much for that. And did you have anything else? Sorry.
No, I think that's the man. I can answer any questions from the trustees here.
So, just real quick, from my understanding, from what you just said, everything's going to be wrapped up by Thanksgiving. Everything will be wrapped up by Thanksgiving except for Glen Estee-Whitlinville.
So this interchange will be wrapped up by Thanksgiving. So continuing, in the next year, you'll see the westbound third lane being constructed.
Okay. Fair enough. Fair enough. Okay.
So there'll be concrete barrier down the middle of State Route 32.
Okay.
I think, sir, if I may, the understanding is that, you know, we'll have this new intersection open at the Bock Buxton so that we can have traffic flowing that direction and then the projects will move a little bit further to the west so that we can finish that part of it. But the idea is that this will be set up and moving to allow traffic to move more freely than it is now and then we'll move on to the next part.
Got it.
And then also the project on 32 and 275 will be wrapped up this year also.
Got it. And, well, Mr. Rowe, I know both of us, or all three of us, would like to ask some questions. And then also, if it's okay, if, in case anybody in the audience would like to add public comments, and then maybe you could have a chat with them as well. Because, I'll tell you, it used to be before, all of this was, when we got into office, John and I, I'm sorry, Mr. Becker and I, you know, a year and a half ago, Mr. Logan's been in for almost four years, we got beat up a lot on, hey, no more apartments, keep our green space. I'm all for it. All for, as a matter of fact, we haven't voted on any apartments since we've been in office. And it was all about East Gate Mall, get it under control. Well, we've hired a market. Now it's, all of that's gone away and it's all like, what is wrong with you trustees? Are you guys crazy? 32 is a mess. It's a nightmare. It's a disaster. I get beat up more on that than I do anything else. And so, thank you for coming here voluntarily and taking our questions and communicating the progress and how we're doing. I'll, I want to ask you a few questions, but also kind of express some things that I'm hearing in the public, but also with us. One is communication. I feel like communication hasn't been very well. For example, we started our Eichols Project roundabouts and, and I got to tell you, I don't think I was ever communicated. No one ever told me that ODOT was planning on doing this or when they started doing this. And we would have coordinated things properly if we would have known. And I just feel like we just didn't know the know.
Well, I mean, trustee Becker does come to the TID meetings every month to hear the updates, so he doesn't know what's going on.
Fair enough. Fair enough. Okay. Mr. Logan and I have full-time jobs, so I can't make the 9:00 AM TID on Friday mornings. But, but yeah, I mean, I just felt like we could have maybe done something different, I feel like, if, if, or at least paused our, our projects so it wasn't so chaotic in East Gate. But that's just my thoughts. Is there any reason why, is it because of the weather coming up to winter? But I feel like everything was just dumped on us all at once, instead of just one at a time, one. Because I know, right by, I just saw by you, John, Rumpke Road's getting shut down over by Rumpke.
It is shut down now.
It is shut down now. Okay. So that's shut down.
Old 74 is shut down by Rumpke.
That's what I meant. Yeah. And so, yeah, so what are your thoughts on that? Could it have been maybe a little more progressive?
For the, all I can really talk about are the ODOT projects on State Route 32. So we've been working on this since, I think, 2004-ish.
Okay.
So we asked for funding in 2015, 16, 17, 18, I think we asked for it for two or three different sources. And we finally, in 19, were able to get funding for this fiscal year, or the last fiscal year when the project sold. So if we're going to, we've been trying for a very long time, so the funding finally became available. So we're going to, we're going to spend the money and build, build what needs to be built.
Fair enough. Fair enough. Okay. A lot of gripes from the businesses on Old 74, a lot. And, and obviously the lack of business, the lack of traffic going by, their businesses have suffered. They're coming to us and we're like, this is an ODOT project. This is not a township project. We have nothing to do with this. And so, have you been, has ODOT been in touch with those businesses that try to help them out?
We are following our standard, standard processes to put up detour signing and get people to the roads that they need to go to.
Is there any funding available to help them get through this at all?
We only, the funding, the funding portion there, we don't, we don't necessarily give businesses funding, money. If we buy property from them, we pay fair market value.
Fair enough. Okay.
That's the only time we really deal with any money with property owners.
Fair enough. Okay. Okay. Ms. Vice Chair, do you have anything, sir?
Oh, yeah. I certainly do. So first off, I want you to repeat what you said about the overpass. Did you say it was going to open up this Saturday?
Yes, this Saturday, part, the new overpass will be partially open. Yes.
So then you'll be able to connect Old 74?
No. That was what I said. When you'll, if you're on the new overpass, you'll take what's labeled ramp five. And then there's a little slip ramp that goes over the Elik Lane. That's how you'll get to Old 74. It's something that we identified after the project, after the plans were done, once we're out in construction, we identified something to help the local businesses, so we are adding a temporary road for a period of time until we can get one and seven open.
Okay, that makes sense. So you'll be able to then, so as of Saturday, you'll be able to get on from the, from the new Bock Buxton, that new road, then get on eastbound 32 from there?
Correct.
And then, or go across the bridge to a temporary road that'll take you over to Elik then to Old 74?
Correct. Yes.
Okay, go ahead. So also, I put, I put some stuff on social media asking for feedback. Boy, did I get it.
Is this Facebook or Nextdoor?
Yes. Both.
Fair enough.
Most of, most of it I get is on, is on Nextdoor. One person said something about the, at the library, there's some utility work going on, Glen Estee-Whitlinville Road there.
Yes.
Is that an ODOT thing or is that the engineer's office?
If it's utilities, it'd be the utility company relocating for the new overpass. So our, our processes start well before the, well before construction actually starts.
So the concern there was, you know, it's just a safety issue with that light. That light was going to be maintained, you know, through the construction period?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. The new overpass touches down and will be at grade at the intersection there by the new Big B Coffee in front of the library.
Okay. You know, this, this question comes up periodically and it's one of my favorites. I think you'll, you'll appreciate it too. They, they, the "they" is ODOT, they probably don't even live around here, so they don't have to put up with all this mess. Would you like to comment on that?
I would not like to comment on that. Continue, please.
Roger that.
Okay. I thought you might want to correct the record. No? All right. Well, let, well, let's stand then. Okay. So also, there's this perception about closing roads you aren't working on. So, you know, two examples come to mind. You know, why was Glen Estee-Whitlinville Road closed when it was? And then really same question would be, going east down the road, Old 74, this was, I don't know, a year, two years ago, that was also closed off. And that one, I still don't understand why that was closed off. Can you shed some light on what's going on with those?
Glen Estee was closed to allow us to finish construction and the widening that had to happen for the new ramp that goes from 32 to Klepper. And then Old 74, that was just, that was just one of the initial phases with traffic being switched over. The contractor was doing subgrade stabilization, so they were, they were actively working in there. One thing that a lot of our contractors do is work at night, so people, they just don't see the workers out there working. And magically, the next morning, there's a bridge appeared. So, yeah.
It seems like there would be an opportunity to at least maintain, say, right turn only in both of those intersections. Was that considered at all or is there a safety problem with that?
Yeah, like I said, these are some of the most dangerous intersections in the state. So we were able to, part of our funding application was committing to getting them closed. So once we felt like we had adequate workarounds and adequate new construction built, we did close them.
Also, you know, so, you know, a lot of complaints about, you know, why were all the roads closed at the same time? So I know a lot of these were engineer projects, so I'm thinking of Eichols, I'm thinking of Old 74. It seems like all this could have been coordinated better. Maybe do two of these this year and two of these next year as opposed to doing them all at the same time. Any thoughts on that?
We, I guess we probably, maybe we could have, but we also can do what we did. Hopefully by Thanksgiving, we're going to have a ton of new roads that ride really smooth, a lot less congestion. The roads are a lot safer. So it's hard for us to say no to money when it's given to us. So the way, the way the money is issued, it has to be spent and the project has to be started within a certain fiscal year.
Can I, may I speak on that for just a minute? Because I know that's been a common concern, so I apologize for interrupting. But, you know, you said, this is project on 32 started 2004, 2005?
Yeah.
Yeah. We've been looking at this funding for 20 years. A lot of the problems in, you know, we have an embarrassment of riches. There's a lot going on in this township and there's a lot of good things going on. This is the ideal version of growing pains. We have a lot of infrastructure that is aging. We have a lot of community increase in use that we need to get corrected. So we've been working with a lot of our partners for 20 years plus to try and get some of these issues addressed. Sometimes the grant funding cycles don't go through in the way that we would love to have them happen. But ultimately, in order to get this work done and to address some of the aging infrastructure, you have to take the money when you can get it. And a lot of the projects that you're seeing going on now are because of that. It is because we have grant funding that we can use to get this finished and we have to use it while it's there and it's on the table. This is a pain in the butt for the next few months, but ultimately, this is going to be a good thing for the township.
Yeah. And to continue on that line of thought, and I appreciate that with us, but I really do appreciate everything that ODOT is doing and the engineer's office doing here in the township. I mean, you know, sure, there's growing pain, sure, it's a pain in the ass right now. But I think once this is over with, there's going to be remarkable improvement, which is really going to be opening up this area for, for new businesses. So, you know, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
For doing that. So a couple more things. So it came to my attention actually today, and I know this was sent to you earlier, so you got a heads up on it, that there's a question with, I guess, signage and how people would get to some of the businesses on Old 74 when Elik is closed down, the north side of that. Holman Motors specifically comes to mind because you get the big travel trailers and such. Question also came up with semis. The question came up about the intersection at Klepper Road and at Bock Buxton, that that's not wide enough. So I guess that's really two things. Is there enough, are these intersections wide enough to safely turn big trucks? You know, the semis, you know, trailer trailers and such? And can you include signage that tells people, if they have to go all the way down, you know, two miles and take the stone-licked exit and come back around, that that's specifically how to get to Holman Motors? Or how to get to the sports places?
Yeah. So I'll start the first, the part with the truck turning radius. So at Klepper and Bock Buxton, to make that, if you're going from Klepper to Bock Buxton, turning left to go north, it is a tight turn. That's all being changed on Saturday, Friday night to Saturday. We did meet with Holman and we heard that complaint. So we are going to, we are going to pull the stop bars back to make sure we have ample turning room there. So we are listening. As we, as a department, we do not sign specifically to businesses. We don't want in any way, shape, or form, people think that we're advertising for them. So like I said earlier, we will sign for people to get to the roads that they're looking for. So we'll have plenty of signage at Glen Estee and 32 to, for a detour to Old 74. And then we'll also have another Old 74 detour set up to go down and around Olive Branch Stone Lives. So that's about a mile, about a mile and a third or so down there and back.
All right. So the last thing I have, and I just kind of put this together on my own. And I want you to, you know, correct me where I'm wrong on this stuff. But really, I just wanted to put together kind of a sequence of events, kind of what to expect when. And so what I'm starting with is the, on August 11th, the Elik Lane North would close State Route 32?
Correct.
September 1st or thereabouts, and, and, you know, these dates obviously aren't exact because, you know, as you said, things can certainly change for various reasons. Elik Lane South would close to State Route 32?
Correct.
September 9th, you might not know the answer to this because this is the engineer's project, but Eichols Road then reopens through traffic?
For the sign out front, that's what it says. Yes.
October 13th, well, things can change. October 13th, Old State Route 74 at Elik, the Elik-Dogwood area that's sectioned with 74 is currently closed, will be open by then?
We've actually moved that up to October 1st.
October 1st? That's good.
We felt like that was the, that was the most reasonable date to pick.
November 1st. And this, this wasn't talked about tonight, I don't think, unless I missed it. And I just found this out today, and so I would, you know, correct me if I'm wrong here. But the Glen Estee-Whitlinville Road, the north end of it, will close to State Route 32, there by the library?
That would happen when, at that point, before Thanksgiving, when the interchange is fully opened. So it wouldn't necessarily be November 1st, whenever we open before Thanksgiving.
Okay. So it would be that same timeframe?
Correct.
So it would be around Thanksgiving, sometime in December?
Yeah. So the intent and the message for this project is, as soon as the new interchange is fully functional and open, we would get rid of the traffic signals on State Route 32. So it would be free flow from 275 to Bauer Road.
Okay. Because that's going to, so, you know, when that closes, and at that point, the, which is next on my list here. Well, I had, actually, the next on the list was again for Thanksgiving, Bock Buxton Interchange would open. We talked about that. But I guess the concern with the Glen Estee-Whitlinville Road closing again around Thanksgiving is you still have then, I guess, a couple of weeks in there until Rumpke, the Old 74, Rumpke Road reopens again. Again, that's an engineer's project, not ODOT. Can, I guess my question would be, can you work with the engineer's office?
Yes.
Old 74 and Glen Estee-Whitlinville North isn't closed at the same time? That after Old 74, oh, it's fully open?
The only thing we would be able to discuss with them is if it was westbound 32 and northbound Glen Estee. That would be the only movement that would potentially be able to stay open.
Okay.
Because we're putting a concrete barrier down the middle, so Glen Estee is going to be completely blocked off from, for, eastbound 32 is not physically going to be able to make a turn to go to north on Glen Estee.
All right. And then, and then that Glen Estee-Whitlinville Road overpass would be opening in, in October of 2025, is that correct?
Give or take. Yeah. So we'll open bids on October 12th, assuming everything goes well. Within eight weeks, we'll have signed contract and typically about eight weeks after that, we'll have a detailed construction schedule that we'll be able to lay out when and the actual timeframe, when they'll open up the traffic.
Okay. And then State Route, this is the last thing I got, State Route 32, I-275, you mentioned that where they're doing that interchange improvement, expanding the design ramps. That's going to be later, later this year?
Yeah, it should be wrapped up, I think, at the end of September.
September?
Yes.
Awesome. It's all in, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Mr. Logan, sir?
Yeah. Hey, thank you. Thank you for your time tonight. And, look, I recognize the growing pains right now, but transportation will drive the economic development. And it's unfortunate that Old 74, it's not your project, but engineer's project, grant funding's overlapping the same time. Was it $180 million of investment dollars are coming in to eliminate these three or four of the most dangerous intersections in Ohio? At the same time that Ohio, Kentucky, Indiana Regional Council of Governments helped pursue grant funding and the county partnered with us for a total of $8 million to pursue the Eichols Road roundabout. I-Colt Road roundabouts and those projects. So, yes, it seems like all the grant funding's hitting at the same time, and that's, as you said, an embarrassment of riches or a problem. So, so I appreciate the hard work and what you're doing in our community, because we know it will pay off for the future and for our kids and generations from there. Quick question for you. Sounds like the gentleman hit on wayfaring signs, so not for you, but Ms. Ayers, if we can engage what businesses are maybe open to wayfaring signs to help get to businesses, I think that'd be a good step. Question for you, Mr. Rowe. Rowe?
Row.
Row, sorry.
I have trouble tonight.
Will the overpasses have, the residents have given us a lot of feedback about connectivity and lack thereof, and we have zoning cases in front of us tonight where we talk about things like facade, connectivity, sidewalks, that, you know, that sense. So, from this perspective, I've got questions around, will there be sidewalk that can go across on those? I don't know where that, so that is, so we will have that connectivity there? That would be great. Good, good. I wanted to make sure we were not missing the mark on that, and if it wasn't planned for, what would we need to do to get that connectivity? So, I think that would be huge for the community. And then, in that same sentiment, where, give me some information, please, on how you get to, like I said, we have businesses that come before us for plan, for zonings, etc., we talk about facade. What does the overpass actually look like? Are we getting a chain link fence up there? Are we getting something that's nice? Or how do we take the next step and placemake and make a sense of community that says, Union Township?
It currently is a chain link fence. Once the project sells, it'll probably be the best time to can have those conversations to see, to see how we want to handle that.
Okay, okay. Is that how, is that how?
Typically, it does not work that way. Typically, it's one of the first things that's done, but I think it's, we're too far, we don't want to delay the project for that, personally. So, I think our best option to get it, to get it in there and get the funding in place would be to meet with you after the project is sold and awarded to the contractor.
Okay.
A little more flexibility.
And that's for all, that's for all, all the overpasses, then?
That would just be for the Glen SD. The one at Buxton is there to put the chain link fence up, or in the process of putting it up today.
Right, right, okay, okay. All right, so, you started the process in 2004. Is that the, kind of the early process that the township should have been involved in?
I mean, the township, we've kept the township involved all the time for all these projects. Typically, once you get a detailed project, get past stage one, stage one, stage two, the process would be that the township would hire their, hire a consultant to design that for them under, they have their own contract with a consultant, and they give us the plans. And the loading to make sure, then we'll make sure our bridge will be able to handle it.
Okay. All right, that's, that's very good information. I know that it wasn't until just recently, when we, when we've, we've done some of our first community surveys and getting an importance of beautification and things like that, placemaking in the township, so, I mean, at least operating off of actual data versus just a sentiment, I think something to carry forward, so I think I'll leave that with the board, too. We keep that in mind for, for future projects or directions, so thank you for the information.
Just ask that, Mr. Rowe, by the way, thank you very much for doing all this. Very much, thank you. And, gentlemen, when the time comes, I'm okay with making exceptions to our sign codes and regulations, so I'd ask that your ODOT folks, if we're shutting down all these roads and it's going to make it tough for customers to go to these businesses, I don't mind a, you know, Bob's Deli, yes, we're open during construction, going, a sign going out on a closed down road. I'm okay with these exceptions, because I don't want these businesses to hurt as much as possible. So, I know we have, you know, our sign regulations, but we're willing to make an exception, but I know ODOT's got their rules as well, assigned, so just, just maybe ask your folks to work with us on that, so we don't hurt these businesses as much as possible. And then, I would agree with Mr. Becker. Gosh, I travel, I would, I used to travel Glen SD-Whitansville four, four times a day, so if you could please work with Jeremy Evans at our Engineers Department for when State Route, or Old Seventy-Four and the north side of Glen SD-Whitansville, just, I'd really like to not for both of those to be shut down at the same time. If you could delay the project slightly, so there's just no, you know, does that make sense? Because it sounds like the timing's just right around the same time, is that correct?
Yeah.
Like a week.
When we, when we, when we, not week, the county wraps up Old Seventy-Four, and you guys are giving a start to shut down Glen SD-Whitansville, sir, if you could please work with that to where there's a buffer, where they're not shut down at the same time, that'd be truly appreciative of that.
Yeah, we will coordinate that and look into it, see what we can do.
Great.
It's about two, two or three weeks.
Yeah.
It's, it's that close.
So, I, I think we're okay, two or three weeks to do that, if you're okay. So, I'd really, it's out of our hands, it's county and ODOT, so it's not a township, you know, but, project, but that'd be greatly appreciated just for our traffic folks, so.
Since we're talking about roads, Mr. Chairman, since it's out of our hands, we did get, what, five miles of township road repaved, and some of those segments came in in about two or four days, so the roads that are in our hands, we got done fast.
That's good. Gentlemen, everything good? Perfect. That's Row, thank you, thank you very much, yeah, yeah, great, yeah, yeah. I know you got to get to soccer, so.
Have a good night.
Thank you, sir, thank you very much. And Mr. Recomer's going to check to see if we have any more public comments back there?
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, ma'am.
Just wanted to point out, we will have this map on our website and some update on information on the traffic and some links to ODOT as well as the county. I asked Clermont County Engineer Jeremy Evans to be here this evening, he was unavailable. He did provide some updates. I think it is interesting, they have two major projects that are going on from the county perspective. One is the I-Colt Road expansion. We anticipate that will open back up on schedule a little early, looking around September the 9th. And then, Old State Route Seventy-four, we're looking August 7th through December 8th, and they're working as fast as they can on that one. I thought it was interesting, particularly on Seventy-four, for the bridge replacement, to point out for residents, that is a bridge that was built in 1926, lasted major repairs in 1991. Lifespan on bridges is about 50 years. So, I think there was some concern about being proactive, making sure that this got repaired at the right time, as soon as we were able to do so to help protect the safety and the infrastructure in that area. They're also going to be working on some road, some landslides that have been going on that were affecting the effectiveness of that road.
Perfect, perfect, thank you, Ms. Ayers. With this as well, so, I'll just finish, so we're not done with our township newsletter, correct? Not yet, for the, for third quarter? I would, I want a fifth grader to be able to understand it, if they read it, on a nice map like that in our newsletter with simple, basic, hey, this date, this roughly, obviously, we use, you know, open into terms, roughly this date, this road will be open, roughly this date, so everyone can understand. And maybe even if Mr. Row wants to put his own words in there, explain it, and same with Jeremy Evans, our engineer, explain it, but this is definitely on everybody's mind, is the East Gate development, so.
Sure.
Perfect, okay. Gentlemen, anything else on, on ODOT Thirty-two? Good? Okay, perfect, moving on. Public comments, I see one, is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight? Okay, seeing none, I will call Mr. Jack Sellers, are you here, sir? And, Mr. Sellers, I already got your name and address here, so you are good, and please, and you, you're on the clock, go ahead, my friend, yes, how are you?
I want to know what you do with the problem with the geese at Mount Mariah Cemetery.
Yeah.
You cannot go to a grave site without stepping in waste. If you've got ashes and whether they're there, it's covered with duck. I mean, what's going to be done about it? I went there to see my family's grave plot, you had zigzag to get to it. And if them geese have baby ducks, they'll attack you. But it seemed like nothing gets done over there. That's the only comment I have.
Good. Mr. Sellers, if you were to watch a few meetings ago, you will know that I'm the biggest anti-Canadian geese guy you'll ever meet. And so, I know, I was talking to our service director, Mr. Taylor, and we are working on getting that done. Obviously, you can't just go out and take care of the problem, but we are working on it, I promise you that, and, you know.
You put them two dog fences up real fast, but yet you're working on Mount Mariah.
Totally agree with you. There's just the legality part of being, you know, you got the, the animal people, that you got to do things humanely, so I can't just go out of the shock and blow up some geese.
No, but you can bring in dogs that's trained for it and put down the coyotes like they do down around bottom of the soccer fields, are they?
Legally, that's all I'm saying. Putting up a dog fence and letting somebody let their dog in a dog park go versus, but I'm with you, I'm with you.
I've voiced my opinion, thank you.
Roger that, thank you, sir, appreciate it. And last call, is there anyone else for public comments? Yeah, please, please, come on up, sir? Please, yeah, yeah, yeah. And then, just please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Michael Miller. I live on Forty-four, Forty-four Glendale Drive, resident here for 35 years. Sorry, I haven't been to any meetings before this.
It's okay, no problem.
I work second shift, now I'm retired. But, what we have, I was right on that road there in Glendale, and what we have is a resident behind us on Kitty Lane, and they failed to pay their utility bills. So, we call the Union Township Police, and you guys do your best, but you say everybody's entitled electric, but they're running a construction generator, and it's allowed DBs at night, and it's really kind of fringing on all the, everybody's quality of life there in the neighborhood. We got several Union Township complaints about it to the police department, and they say their hands are tied on what they can do. And I didn't know if it's zoning or what, so.
Sounds like it. Can you do me a solid, Ms. Ayers, did you get his, his name and address?
Yeah.
You did? Okay.
We will get it before we leave, I was just checking to make sure.
Do me a solid, sir, and I want you to fill out one of those cards in the back, make sure to put your info on it, and it does sound like a zoning issue, and we'll definitely check into it, absolutely.
That's why I'm here, and I like the format here, sorry I haven't been here before, but I work night shift.
Oh, you're fine, sir, okay, it's okay.
I'll be back in touch with you, they're going to get your address and your phone number, and I'll be back in touch with you.
Thanks, Susan.
Yeah, appreciate you, thank you very much, yeah. Okay, is there anyone else for public comments tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Next item on is personal actions, and Chief Daimling, our fire chief, I'm going to go and throw it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Dills. This evening, I would like to introduce and recommend Mr. David O'Connor. For consideration for the position of mechanic with the fire department. He has 20 years of experience working in the public sector, working currently for Ohio Township, and prior to that, working with, working for Pierce Township. He has served as the Southwest Director of the Ohio Emergency and Municipal Apparatus Maintenance Symposium since 2012. He has successfully completed all aspects of the hiring process. I would recommend, recommend a conditional offer of employment to Mr. O'Connor as a full-time mechanic, get a ready pay of $35 an hour, effective September 11th, 2023, pending successful completion of his physical examination.
Great, thank you, chief. And, Mr. Connor, welcome, sir, how are you?
Good.
Good, 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 yeah, appreciate you coming on board, we definitely need your experience in our department, so appreciate you very much, as far as your mechanic.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah, absolutely. Gentlemen, do you have anything for Mr. Connor, though?
Yes, welcome to Union Township, glad to hear.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
It's great to see you here. A few years ago was when we first hired on a mechanic to be able to bring that type of work in-house, and so it's great to be able to see you continue that work, and it saves us, saves taxpayer funds that way, so it's great.
Thank you. Yeah, gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Mr. David O'Connor II to the position of mechanic in the fire department, a pay rate of $35 an hour, effective September 11th, 2023.
Subbooked.
Sub.
No further discussion, Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Connor, congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, come on, shake your hand.
Absolutely.
Congratulations, welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Great, let's stick around real quick, Mr. Connor, right afterwards, yeah, perfect.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm excited to have you.
Welcome aboard.
All right, Chief Reese, you're up next, go ahead, sir, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Dills, I would like to present tonight to the board Nathaniel Borchers for the position of police officer for Union Township. Mr. Borchers is a resident of Sycamore Township, Hamilton County, and a 2021 graduate of the Butler Tech Police Academy, where he earned his HOPADA Police Officer Certification. Mr. Borchers served six years in the Army National Guard, served one year as a police officer for the Lenders Center of Hope, and comes to us from the Hamilton, City of Hamilton Police Department, where he has served as a full-time police officer for just over a year. Mr. Borchers has successfully completed all pre-employment phases for the position of police officer, including background and polygraph examination. I'm requesting the board appoint Nathaniel Borchers to the position of police officer in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement, impending successful completion of a psychological and physical examination. Mr. Borchers' start date is tentatively scheduled for September 5th, 2023.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Borchers, how are you?
Good, I'm good.
Good, 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 you don't have an older sister, do you?
No.
No, okay, I knew, I knew it, Borchers, school with. But Army grad, Lenders Center of Hope, great, great resume, yeah, yeah, appreciate you choosing Union Township. What, what part of town do you live in, don't want to ask you?
Deer Park.
Oh, Deer Park, okay, not too far, great, great, and, but, welcome, glad to have you on board, much needed, and it's a great team, love our police force, you'll love it, absolutely. Mr. Becker, do you have anything?
Yeah, did I hear City of Hamilton on your resume?
Yes.
Interesting place, so what's your most memorable experience there?
It's like asking a mechanic what his favorite break job.
Never-ending experiences. I can imagine. You'll, you'll find things are very different here, so welcome aboard.
Thank you.
What'd you, what'd you do in the Army National Guard?
I was a new shooter.
There we go, all right. All right, well, hey, thank you for your service there, and, you know, you've got great experience across a few different organizations now that are very reputable, and we're excited to have you find a long-lasting career here. It's a great culture, and you're going to really enjoy it, and we're going to enjoy seeing you around, so thank you.
Thank you.
That's awesome. All right, gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion for the appointment of, is it Nathan or Nathaniel?
Nathan.
Nathan, of Nathaniel Borchers to the position of patrol officer in the police department in accordance to, with 12-month salary rate pursuant to the terms of the current collective bargaining agreement, effective September 5th, 2023.
Subbooked.
Sub.
No further discussion, Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion carries.
Mr. Borchers, welcome, sir. Welcome, sir. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Welcome back. Excited to have you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, we'll move along. Next item on the agenda is our department reports. And Chief Daimling, you are up first with our firing events. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you again, Mr. Dills. Uh, for the month of July, the department responded to one hundred and seventy-two calls for service for fire and, and regular service calls, four hundred and seventy-five emergency medical responses, four hundred and sixty-five patient contacts. We made three hundred and forty-one transports to the hospital. The department completed one thousand one hundred and ninety-eight hours of training for the month. Were involved in twenty-two public education details. We had seventy hours of, uh, EMT medic, uh, ride time on the paramedic units. We completed nine life safety inspections. We had eleven total inspections with, uh, joint inspections with the Claremont County Building Department, and that concludes my report.
Chief, thank you. And, uh, I know it's the police night out, but your firefighters did an excellent job at our police night out and, uh, uh, real friendly. I love the trucks outside, did a good job and helping out, so just wanna say thank you on that.
Yeah, very, very nice event.
Yeah, it was a great event. Yeah, absolutely. And, uh, do you want, you, do, do gentlemen have anything?
Uh, yeah, Chief, go ahead. With the personnel action for mechanics, does that fulfill that vacancy, moving, looking forward?
It does.
Okay. So then we have, what, two vacancies that would be open?
That's correct. Administrative assistant position and a firefighter position.
Okay. Great. Hey, thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, no problem. All right, Chief Reese, you're up next with our police department.
Thank you, Mr. Dills. In the month of July, the communications center handled five thousand three hundred and fifty-five calls for service for police, fire, and EMS, and five thousand one hundred and twenty-four total calls for service. We ha, uh, the clerks in records handled four hundred and ninety-two juvenile and adult court-related documents that were processed for court. Uh, the records section handled ninety-seven court notices that have been entered for officers' personal appearance for court. They handled eight Rule Sixteens that were processed for the prosecutor's office. No vendor permits were issued for the month, and we handled one hundred and sixty public records requests. In the area of public affairs and crime prevention, officers conducted three public relations events during the month of July. This included an active shooter presentation at the Glen, next door to the police department. We participated in a Fourth of July parade in the Polo Fields, and we hosted one citizen rider. In the area of operations, we took three hundred and fifty-seven incident reports, one hundred and three crash reports. Officers made eight hundred and ninety-six traffic stops, wrote one hundred and seventy-four tickets, and issued seven hundred and fifty-three written warnings. We made one hundred and thirteen criminal arrests, eighty-nine traffic arrests, and served ninety-five warrants in the month of July. For the month of July and training, officers totaled one hundred and twenty-seven total hours of training for all police department employees. Um, that, that concludes my report, but in closing, if I could, first of all, I'd like to expand on, on the board's, uh, comments about the night out. Um, it was, once again, an incredible event, and I, I wanna impress on everybody that it couldn't be done without the fire department, Chief Daimling, the service department, Mr. Taylor and his employees. We quite simply couldn't do it without them. And last but not least, our, our Citizen Police Academy alumni, Lynn Baird, who's here tonight. They do such an incredible job every year. Uh, we cooked a thousand hamburgers. I don't have a number on hot dogs. They were six hundred years of corn. Uh, and again, the crowd gets bigger over years. So, very, very proud of that event and the ability to, uh, get out there and mingle with the, with the, uh, community in a way that we don't obviously get to do a lot. Um, so the night out was a great event. And lastly, I just wanted to bring to the board's attention, unfortunately, a growing crime trend that we're seeing in, in the greater Cincinnati area, uh, and unfortunately, it's made its way into the township, specifically as, as it relates to an event that we had back on July third. It took a lot of manpower to get to the bottom of. I'm very proud to say that we were able to. Unfortunately, on July third, we had an aggravated robbery at the Fifth Third ATM machine in front of Recker and Berger on one twenty-five. Unfortunately, the ATM tech was robbed at the threat of gunpoint by three suspects of about twenty-six thousand dollars. Very significant felony theft. Uh, we sent our detectives and officers out. Unfortunately, we had no evidence, no witnesses, no suspects to go on through the use of some flock cameras in, in area, in surrounding jurisdictions and cooperation from those jurisdictions. Um, our detectives did an absolutely incredible job at developing a suspect vehicle, um, an out-of-town rental car with an out-of-town plate. Uh, we were able to get an all-points BOLO out to basically nationwide. Um, we were fortunate enough the following day to have a department just out of, side of Houston, Texas, make a traffic stop on the suspect vehicle.
No way.
Um, they apprehended one of the suspects, who we believe was involved in it, and over half of the money was recovered. Uh, we immediately sent our detectives down to Houston, Texas. As always is the case with our detectives, they hit the, the tarmac and they hit the ground running. Uh, they were down there for three days. We got a lot of cooperation out of the FBI, out of local jurisdictions down there. Uh, we were able to serve search warrants, collect evidence. We were able to recover and bring home half that money. Uh, we were able to, obviously, one of the suspects was apprehended. We were able to identify the other two suspects in the last month, and I'm very proud to say that all three suspects are now in custody. Um, one of them has been extradited back, and he's in the Claremont County Jail, and we're hoping that the other two are right behind them. To say that I'm proud of our department is very, would be an understatement. I truly believe that at a lot of other departments, especially departments our size, this case probably would have been put on the back burner just from a lack of evidence, it just because of the far reach of the suspects involved. I mean, Houston, Texas is a long way. Um, but that's just not the way our guys operate, and, you know, what we're really trying to do is send a message to these, these groups and, and that they're not gonna get away with that in Union Township, and we're gonna do what we have to do to, to solve the crime, to prosecute them and put them in jail. Um, unfortunately, that's not the only, the only group. The crime trend is these groups of out-of-town people in rental cars committing theft offenses. We had two more the night of the night out, and fortunately, again, we were able to apprehend both groups through traffic stops. Uh, one of them involved a short foot pursuit, but we did apprehend all five suspects, and we've got felony charges against them, again, uh, out-of-state people from Florida in rental cars, a very intricate theft scam that they're running. Um, we were able to charge them with high-level felonies for engaging in a pattern of corrupt activity. And again, you know, I, I couldn't be prouder of the job that our officers and detectives do, um, every day. So, I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board, and I thank you for giving me that opportunity.
Amazing, Chief. You know, we hear a lot of, obviously, negativity, uh, and, and that goes on, and it's, it's awesome when we can turn that negative into a positive. And, uh, um, I, I know I could speak on behalf of both these guys up here. You have our full support, both, both you and our fire department, and that's awesome. I love hearing that. You're right, the easy thing to do would have been like, lack of evidence, it's down in Texas. Uh, we got, we got other things to fry here, but, uh, well done. That is awesome. I love hearing that.
Thank you.
I do. That's great.
Thank you.
That's great. So, well done. And, uh, um, I wanted to also say, I thought, uh, it was really neat to be a part of Sergeant Brown's retirement, and to see all of those former police officers that haven't worked with our department for a number of years still come back, and just the camaraderie, uh, I love, I love the culture that you're building, sir, and, uh, well done, Chief Reese. So, uh, really appreciate you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Becker, anything, sir?
Oh, yeah, a couple of things. So, uh, on the, on the Texas situation, I guess I'm curious, you know, aren't there ATM machines in Texas they could bump off? What are they doing up here? Same with the Florida people.
Well, unfortunately, they won't talk to us at all. Um, they're, you know, they've been around the block a few times, but I think they truly believe the further they go in the crimes that they commit, and if they can get back to their home state or back where they're going, you know, Union Township Police Department's not gonna follow. And, you know, that's, again, the message we're trying to get out there is we are gonna follow them, we're gonna catch it. And there's some money involved in that, of course, there's some manpower, but, um, trust me when I say that that message gets through to people, to these criminals, and, you know, it's just another area that they're gonna check off of their list that they're not gonna come back to because they don't think they can get away with it, so.
Very good. All right, I gotta switch gears on you here to a new topic. So, I think it was a couple of weeks ago that something made national news. It was in, I wonder if it's Circleville?
Yes, sir.
Centerville? Circleville, maybe?
Circleville.
So, a situation where there was a truck driver, uh, there, there was, I think, a local cop there, there was state police there, uh, involved a K-9. Uh, guy was out of the truck, had his hands up, I figure, hands o, over his head, and I had to, and after I watched this video, I think, like, for the third time, so, you know, seen it on the news, I think I figured out what was finally going on, 'cause it, you know, initially, it was very cloudy with the, with the facts were, with, with the case. And, and the cop got fired, and it turned out he wasn't fired because of, of, of a policy issue, 'cause he followed policy. And I was trying to, oh, how could that be policy? And so, it appeared to me that he, he, I guess, was partially following orders, the, the suspect, that he had his hands o, over his head, but he wasn't kneeling, he was being told to kneel, and he wasn't kneeling. I'm not sure if that's what, what was the case, what sort of appeared on the video. And so, his training was, or the policy of his department was, release the dog, 'cause he's not fully complying with orders. Be that as it may, I don't necessarily need all the details of what happened in Circleville. My question really is, what is the K-9 policy here in Union Township regarding suspects?
Well, at our department, the K-9 officer himself has a great deal of discretion. Also, they go through a great deal of training. If you're asking me when it's appropriate to release a K-9 on a suspect, I would tell you typically there are three incidents. One would be if they are actively, uh, resisting arrest and in such a manner that the K-9 officer feels that releasing the dog is the appropriate response, uh, to get the subject to comply. The second condition I would tell you is that, you know, the, the K-9 officer feels that the suspect in general poses a serious risk of physical harm or violence to the officer or somebody else, and releasing the dog is the best-case scenario to, to apprehend the suspect or get him under control. And lastly, and you see this often, you know, if you've got a suspect that's hunkered down in a building, an abandoned building, or, or inside a thicket of bushes, and I've been in a situation like that before, it's not necessarily safe to send an officer in there because they just don't know what's going on inside there when they're, when they're hiding. And it's safer to send the K-9 in. Um, you know, we love our K-9s, but I'd rather see the K-9 get shot or injured than one of our officers. So, those would be the three conditions that I would say, by our policy, we would release a K-9 on suspect.
Sounds very reasonable.
I just feel that answers your question.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Becker, great question. Thanks for asking that. And, uh, might I add, uh, Mr. Logan, I can attest, I would not recommend getting bit by one of those dogs. We were both used as dummies at the last, uh, police night out, and, uh, I would not recommend that. But, uh, Mr. Logan, go ahead, sir. Anything?
Gets your heart beating, though.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, tha, thanks for the update on, on the two, uh, trends of, of new criminal behavior. Uh, the one case, going back to Texas, I'm just a little curious, is there any relationship to as much, um, traffic that there is that's coming across the border and criminals that push north, or, um, is there any relation there or no, in the, in these scenarios?
It'd be hard for me to speculate on that, but in this particular situation, I don't believe so.
Okay. All right, well, that's good. That's good. Uh, and then, I, um, have, are, are you seeing, do you feel like any increase of mental health and suicide? I was looking through the notes here and saw some, some recent suicides, um, in the township.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's something always, that's always at the forefront of law enforcement here, not just here, but everywhere, uh, the mental health issue. It's really a hot-button topic for training for law enforcement. You know, we send our guys to a lot of de-escalation-type training.
Yeah.
Trying to talk people down that are suffering from mental illnesses.
Yes.
Um, so to answer your question, you know, we, we see a lot of that.
Yeah. Yeah. I was just looking back, a couple of cases here that are in your, your written report, and, uh, yeah, just, that's standing out to me as well, so. Uh, well, again, big, uh, round of, uh, support for what you're doing with UTPD and all the officers that are on the ground running, and I know they're very busy, uh, back and forth, long, long days, late nights, and a lot of, uh, great, great work, police work going on, so we really appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Chief. And moving on to our service department, our director, Mr. Matt Taylor. Sir, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Dills. In the cemetery division, from July first through the thirty-first, twenty-one barrels were performed, generating eleven thousand one hundred dollars. Eight resident graves were purchased, generating four thousand four hundred dollars. One non-resident grave was purchased for fifteen hundred dollars. One columbarium niche for seventeen hundred and fifty dollars. The total amount generated for the period was twenty-one thousand eight hundred eighty-six dollars and eight cents. And the roads division, a total of thirty-one work orders were completed on thirty township roads. Staff completed line-of-sight issu, issues within the public right-of-way on seven township streets. And then the parks division, uh, staff provided setup and cleanup for the concerts and events on seven, eight, and seven twenty-nine, and staff assisted with the first annual pickleball tournament at Veterans Park. And, uh, that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I know, police night out, last concert we had, last movie night we had, uh, it's all your service department that basically puts all it together as far as, uh, setup and teardown, as far as the cleanup. Appreciate you guys very much. Make sure to pass our much appreciation onto your, your service guys. Appreciate you very much. Mr. Becker, do you have anything?
Yep.
Mr. Logan?
Uh, real quick, Mr. Taylor, last month, kinda floated the idea about with the pickleball, uh, courts, uh, on track at Clever Park in September.
Yes.
Uh, how much of a bear do you think it'd be to, to do a fall pickleball slam?
We.
Between Ms. Ayers and Mr. Taylor. I just know we floated that idea a little bit.
I think we're waiting to see when this exactly opens and what the weather's like at the time.
Okay. Okay.
Well, that's, that's, that's.
They were out there today, today, working. They were moving dirt today.
Yeah. Okay. That's agreeable. That's good. I know, I, I would just wanna touch back real quick on, uh, I asked you at one point, that site layout, now that gotten further along.
Yes.
Um, if you may recall, um, twelve courts are something that will bring on, uh, tournaments. And so, recently, Convention Visitors Bureau brought that up to me and said, "Well, funny you say twelve courts." It's something I brought up to Mr. Taylor before in the past, to know, like, a long-range plan. Um, but they were basically just highlighting that if we had twelve courts, we'd be able to get some tournaments in through here. I kinda pivoted back to the fact that, well, sorry, your point's always gonna get a lot of, uh, tournaments down Cincinnati, but what'd be nice is on the front end and the back end, we do some type of exhibits with our courts, you know, our, our courts that we have here and pull up some of the amateur, pro-am type players. Uh, but the short of my question is, does that site provide, if there is ever funding in the future, um, additional expansion of courts?
We can take a look at it.
Yeah.
I, I know we would be limited, depending on how many you were talking about. We are somewhat limited on space, 'cause you get closer to the pond.
Yeah.
So, but, uh, obviously, we will, the current situation, we can fit, uh, obviously, the existing courts that we're going to.
Yeah.
That we've started installing.
Okay. Sounds great.
Something we can definitely look at down the road.
It's, uh, just long, long, long-term. Not a, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Mr. Taylor, just one more question. Uh, any, any change to the timeline, timeframe as far as when the pickleball courts in the playground will be done?
Unfortunately, not. I know that they've, there was a little bit of an issue with fencing, which I, um, I talked to the contractor about today, so we're going to, uh, look to a different subcontractor to try and speed that up as well. I talked to the playground, uh, installer as well. There was an issue with benches that wasn't going to be till, like, mid-November, so we switched, uh, something on that as well to obviously s- speed up the install. So, it unfortunately, there's, there have been some supply chain issues.
That's okay, that's okay. Ballpark, when will the pickleball course be completed?
I'm, I'm optimistic the end of September.
Okay.
So hopefully sooner, uh, but, uh, that's just where we're at right now.
That's good, perfect, perfect. Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Gentlemen, anything else, sir? Okay, thank you, Ms. Taylor. Uh, next is our planning and zoning. Uh, Mr. McCormick, our development director, go ahead, sir.
For the month of July, we had forty-three enforcement inspections, seven complaints, four unfounded complaints, four warning citations, three fifteen-day non-compliance letters, one thirty-day violation letter, no actions to the township attorney, thirteen cases resolved, four hundred and ninety-three legal signs removed, eleven miscellaneous issues, twelve violations for the month, thirteen re-inspections of violations, and six nuisances filed. For permit activity, we had two commercial permits, one change of use, thirteen signs, three single-family homes, eight additions, one deck, three accessory permits, twelve permits for pools or fences, uh, for forty-three total permits in the month, and the revenue, uh, for those permits being ten thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And, uh, we also took in twelve hundred and forty-eight dollars for the fire department reviews. And that concludes our report.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Uh, record number of illegal signs removed, almost five hundred. Incredible, wow. Tell our guys, nice job. Mr. Becker, do you have anything?
Nope.
Mr. Luke?
Uh, as, since you mentioned the signs, gentlemen, I, I have, I have heard some feedback now occasionally from members of the community. At first, it was, the signs are out there and as we ramped up. And last year, we had a record set of removal for, what, nearly thirty, eight-hundred or four-thousand signs. Uh, now I hear some from the community, though, referencing like, "Well, those are companies and businesses out there that actually want to work." And so, um, anyway, they've kind of asked that we try to look at what's a good middle of the road on, on sign policy. I know it's difficult and I, I don't know if either of you saw the email I saw over the weekend, I think people have been stealing political signs, but there's, with the special election today, there are signs being, um, uh, I think being, being stolen by just residents, but, um, but we also want to make sure too, Mr. McCormick, that our, you know, sign crew knows that they're not infringing on First Amendment rights there. And I know there's significant guidance around that, so. Ms. Ayers, I'm just, just highlighting that kind of on the radar for, for the staff and also forward for any, any potential thoughts as that moves forward with sign policy and what's the right happy middle, uh, as far as, you know, I know you probably, uh, crossed a lot of good paths with a lot of hard-working, uh, individuals in the roofing business. And so, you know, if you're putting signs out there and your signs are going away, what type of feedback you make there, so, that's all.
Yeah, yeah. Yep. Thank you, Mr. Luke. Mr. McCormick, thank you. And our administrator, Ms. Susan Ayers, please, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Um, wanted to reiterate, um, we've had some, some really successful events, um, police night out with our police and fire departments, our service department. We continue to have great turnout at our, uh, movies in the park and our concerts. Really enjoyed that this summer. Just wanted to thank all of the staff that I know have been working really hard to get these things accomplished this summer. I believe there's a new citizens' police academy getting ready to start up, so we're happy to see that community involvement. Um, Mr. Taylor is being very modest over there, but the service department also just, uh, finished their re-accreditation with incredibly high marks, um, so we're very proud of them and, um, we'll celebrate that again in the future, but, uh, he's being modest over there and not mentioning it. Um, along with service department, road resurfacing, um, for the summer season is now complete. There may be some striping picked up, but the pavement is all down. I have heard very positive feedback about the contractors and the process. I think it worked really well for us, um, cooperating with the county and educating that, people on that bulk buying benefits. Um, so I'm really pleased with that. Hopefully, you've received similar feedback. Dog parks are now open at Klepper. Thank you to the park district for working with us on a grant to pay for it. We're working on some interior finishes and things. There was now a water run to that, so people that need to get water for their dogs can do that, um, and I hope people have had positive experiences there. Uh, we discussed, we broke ground on the pickleball courts, the playground, we're looking at those opening in the fall. Um, we'll look for some activities around those, depending on the weather, um, with that October timeframe. I always get a little dicey on weather for outdoor activities. Um, we got our updates on the road construction. The discussions at East Gate Mall continue. Had some press this week come out, um, and I know MSP has been working through their stakeholder meetings. We hope to have some public meetings out here in the next few weeks, so hopefully before or around the next meeting, we'll have a couple of public sessions for people to come out and look at what's gone on so far and voice their opinion. Um, at the last meeting, we had a discussion about, um, commercial vehicles being allowed to be parked in the driveway. That is considered a text amendment to the zoning resolution, which requires twenty-days, um, notification prior to having a hearing and making the actual change. There was not twenty days between our last meeting and today, so it was not, um, on this agenda. I anticipate it will be on the next agenda, correct, Mr. McCormick?
That's something we're working on.
Yeah. So, I just wanted to let people know, we didn't forget about it. It was a requirement to post notice. Um, we want to make sure that we're following the rules appropriately, so people that want to come in and voice their opinion further can do so.
Ma'am, is that, is that for the work-in session or the next business meeting?
Next business meeting.
Okay.
We're going to talk about it at the zoning commission meeting.
Okay. Please try hard. I'd like that to be on our next agenda and I'd like to vote, vote to happen on that, so, yeah, please, please try hard to get that on the zoning meeting. Thank you. Sorry, Ms. Ayers.
That's okay. Uh, I think that is all I have at this time.
Ms. Ayers, well done, thank you. Good job. Thanks for all the updates. No, good, got a lot of good things going on where you, you are organizing with us. Appreciate you. Love the movie night out, police night out, uh, our concerts are hits, love it, good stuff. Uh, Mr. Becker, do you have anything, sir?
Nope.
Uh, Mr. Luke?
Uh, just one thing. Ms. Ayers, how are you liking the, uh, new vendor for the newsletter?
I will commend them. I think the process was a lot smoother, um, got out a lot more timely, and I think actually was a little bit more cost-effective than the previous vendor, so, um, I think we'll continue to use that unless you have some feedback you'd like to hear, but, um, I was very pleased with the way it turned out.
Great, happy to hear that. Awesome. Hey, great work all, all, all on. Thank you, Ms. Ayers.
Good, good, perfect, alright. Thank you, Ms. Ayers. Alright, moving on to our public hearings. And these are, let me look here, first one will be Union Township Zoning Case eight-dash-two-three-dash-O as an Oscar, and Mr. McCormick, would you please like to present that, sir?
Yes. Thank you. Uh, for the first case, eight-point-three-O, going over the district plan, uh, the applicant being an address, hoping I pronounced the name right. Vasito. Thank you. And the site location is indicated there on the staff report and in this slide, uh, multiple addresses here, forty-five, forty-three, and forty-five, forty-five Yates Lane, Bell's Lane, Yates Lane, and five-forty-two Old State Route, uh, seventy-four. And there are a number of parcels, I will not go over them all, uh, that are also included. I think there are seven, or maybe more, eight. The total about point, or one-point-six-five acres. Uh, the zoning of the property is B-one and is, the property is located within Mount Carmel Business District Commercial, uh, Corridor Focus Area. Uh, and on the property, they are looking, I'll come back to that here in a minute. So this is the, in this slide, the, uh, affected parcels. The affected parcels that are shown to the south are actually really just more for the access point that's proposed off Mount Carmel Tabasco Road. Uh, the remaining parcels are where the proposed development would occur, which is for a, um, multi-tenant retail building. The, it's on the southwestern corner of thirty-two and Mount Carmel Tabasco Road, and, um, Mount Carmel Tabasco Road is a minor collector five-lane roadway with a volume of approximately ten thousand, two hundred vehicles a day in that location. Subject property is all zone B-one and the adjacent property to the east, west, and south of zone business, uh, to the northwest, uh, the property is zone residential two, and to the northeast, the property is zone planned development. In terms of the comprehensive plan, I mentioned the, the properties located in the Mount Carmel Business Corridor. Landes Plan indicates the quarter is home to several diverse uses, including small office, retail, and residential, all blended. Corridor contains limited parking due to small lot sizes and significant lot area coverages. Plan also indicates that future development should build upon past successes in the business district with a focus on redevelopment through the use of the overlay application. Among other things, uh, things required in, in the plan are sidewalks for new development, architectural reviews necessary to ensure high-quality building materials are utilized. Developments need to take in consideration landscaping and street gate, streetscape beautification efforts and promoting monument-style signage along with blade signage. Article thirteen of the zoning resolution outlines the purpose, uh, of the focus areas. And section thirteen-ten outlines the, um, review process, um, number B-five indicating that the trustee shall consider the overlay district application, make appropriate findings of fact, and adopt a motion approving or denying the applications. And, uh, section thirteen-oh-seven specifically, um, addresses the focus overlay commercial corridor districts, which is on page two of the staff report. In terms of the background of the project, we have a vacant couple of lots there that are wooded, vegetation. We have a couple of lots that have, um, homes that appear to be dilapidated. We have a parcel that has been vacated that was previously part of Yates Lane. Um, and then we have the parcels to the south where the proposed common access would be, uh, as proposed, uh, from Mount Carmel to Mount Carmel Tabasco Road. Uh, the applicant's planning a thirteen thousand, five hundred square foot multi-tenant, uh, building strip center, uh, with the southern portion consisting of approximately a three or four thousand square foot pizza restaurant with a drive-through. Uh, this is a overlay of the plan on that property. You can see the, leading up to the common access point there on Mount Carmel Tabasco Road. Uh, this is just looking at the plan, a little bit different orientation. And this is the proposed landscaping plan. So, a review of the application, um, we find that the, staff finds that the, uh, proposal appears to be consistent with the recommendations of the adopted Landes Plan and the findings of specific purposes of the overlay zoning district regulations. The applicant has proposed a primary structure consistent of traditional building materials, however, staff needs some more information to make proper determinations regarding the proposed signage. The front and southern side of the building has a variety of different panels and textures to complete the overall building and facade, and the parking and driveway areas in the current plan would be accessed off that common curb cut on Mount Carmel Tabasco Road, with the ingress egress ultimately needing to be approved by the county engineer. Uh, there's already an existing crosswalk located for pedestrian connectivity at the intersection of State Route thirty-two and Mount Carmel Tabasco Road. A new additional sidewalk is proposed to tie into the development and crease, and increase pedestrian connectivity in the area. Uh, there is no exterior lighting being proposed at that, at this time, um, but we expect that that will change. Dumpster would need to be noted as being either masonry or block material, and the landscaping plan does appear to be inadequate at this point, uh, for the southwestern side and rear areas of the site, and, um, is, that is an item in the staff recommendations. In terms of the action required, we're looking at section thirteen-ten and the board of trustees' roles to enter a motion to approve, modify, or deny the focus overlay district application, which again consists of approximately a thirteen thousand, five hundred square foot multi-tenant building, as submitted, along with any more further modifications deemed appropriate by the board. Pause there for a moment. Uh, these are the pictures of the site. This is the oblique, kind of three-dimensional view looking north. I have part of the site highlighted there. This is looking from Yates Lane, uh, towards the site, part of the site, uh, on the right. This is looking from northeast to the left to the north. Uh, the left side is the adjoining property to the south, and to the right, you can see one of the houses and part of another house that's there, um, off of what was formerly Yates Lane. That was the section that was vacated. This is looking west across the Mount, uh, towards the Mount Carmel Tabasco access, so that would be your access point there, and the, um, new, um, access would, would be to the right of the fenced area there. And that area there would, is the lot, um, area that would need to be cleared, um, for the proposed development. This is looking east across, uh, from the Mount Carmel Tabasco access and one of the other sites that we have for a case tonight. This is looking north from the Mount Carmel Tabasco access, which would run parallel to, um, Mount Carmel Tabasco into that adjoining property. This is looking south from that access. This is looking southwest from that access, the existing development. In terms of the recommended modifications, um, we have in here that the applicant would need to address any concerns from related other agencies and departments. Uh, would need to provide anticipated peak and average daily traffic volumes and identify loading and unloading areas. Uh, would need to provide an enhanced landscaping plan, particularly along the southwestern side and rear areas of the site, a more detailed signage plan, a proposed dumpster enclosure would need to consist of masonry or block material on at least three sides. Uh, we would need the lighting information if and when applicable. Uh, we would need a survey and legal description of all consolidated acreage, and we had a couple of minor administrative items that would need to also be addressed. And with that, uh, if you have any questions, I can try to answer them.
Mr. McCormick, great presentation. I just want to confirm, so, the zoning commission as well as us, we have not been presenting anything with lighting, landscaping, no signage, or dumpsters, is that correct? None of that's been proposed?
We have received a landscaping plan, uh, it's just that there are some, uh, issues with that southwestern sou- southern area. Uh, we have, they're saying that no lighting is proposed at this time, but we anticipate that they are going to put some lighting in, and when that happens, they're going to have to do a lighting plan and, and present the information about the lighting to make sure it's downward-facing.
Perfect. So tonight, we were voting on, uh, approval of basically demoing the project building, but none of the items mentioned that we talked about, is that correct?
Uh, we would, the retail strip center is proposed, um, we do need the items, we, the items we felt needed to be addressed are all part of the recommended modifications.
Great, okay, okay. Just, just for clarity, okay, perfect. Uh, gentlemen, do you have any questions for Mr. McCormick at all? Nope, okay. Okay, this is a public hearings, uh, zoning case, and so with that, uh, I'm going to go and open the case up, and this, uh, is open for public comment for this specific case, um, for Union Township Zoning Case eight-dash-two-three-dash-O as an Oscar. So we'll start off first with anyone that is a proponent, that is for this case, come on forward, and I'll go and swear you in. Yeah, come on, sir, yeah. Oh, no, you're fine, you're fine, you don't have to present that. No, you're okay? And then, um, alright, please go ahead and state your, or raise your right hand, and then, uh, I'm just going to swear you in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so if you got?
I do.
Great. And please state your name and address for the record?
I will do. Uh, my name is Georgie Onardi. Um, I am with the Kleinger's Group. Uh, we are a site civil engineering firm, helping our client out to develop this property. And all I wanted to say is, all of the staff review comments, we are willing to work with, uh, the township to make sure everything is taken care of and approved. Uh, we look forward to developing this site and, um, happy to have this project move forward. And I'm also happy to answer any additional questions while I'm here, too.
Appreciate you, sir, very much. And, uh, first off, uh, thank you, because, um, this is right, uh, at the entrance, if you will, uh, to Mount Carmel, and I'm excited for this project. I think this is a great project for that area. Uh, we hear all the time about Mount Carmel. What are you going to do at Mount Carmel? Here we go. And, uh, Mount Carmel, get ready. And so I love it. Uh, just, just a side question, um, I mean, obviously, you, you folks know what you're doing. Do you, so you, you, you're not the owner of any retail businesses, or you don't represent any of the owners of the actual businesses going in there, is that correct?
I personally do not, and am not.
Okay, okay. Did you want to share those tenants at all or leave, or not yet? It's okay if you say no?
I'll have to say no.
Okay, that's okay.
We've, we've shared it with, uh, Mr. McCormick.
Okay.
Uh, who the main tenant would be.
Okay.
Um, but I don't feel like I'm in a direct position to elaborate.
I want to totally respect that, so that's okay. So we're, we're, I'm, I'm excited for this development. Gentlemen, did you have any questions at all?
Well, yeah, you just eliminated three of my questions.
Yep, that's why, that's why I asked that question, so.
But I do have one left. So Yates Lane, is that going to be abandoned, or is that going to be refurbished? Is that going to be ingress egress?
So currently, there is an ingress egress easement that goes through Yates Lane to serve the existing properties that are there. Uh, that will stay active for those properties. Um, this, uh, proposed development will be using the access off of Mount Carmel Tabasco specifically.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Luke?
Uh, just likewise, I'm very excited about this for Mount Carmel, uh, so, you know, it's, uh, thank you for identifying and locating, uh, that's been a corner, a corner I've looked at frequently and often, and, uh, it's exciting to be to bring something in there. Uh, I know you got multiple tenants that can go in there. I have long thought that something that, uh, is, uh, a different type of dining and, uh, ice cream and a couple of things, I know that would do really, really well there, so I'm just going to start putting that out and, uh, hopefully you'll be, uh, getting phone calls from businesses wanting to locate their businesses within your, your new beautiful building.
That would be the hope, yes.
Good, good. Well, thank you, sir, appreciate you very much. Yeah, thank you.
I'll take that.
And is there anyone else that would like to speak that is a proponent, that is for this zoning case? Okay, seeing none? Is there anyone that would like to speak that is an opponent, that is against this case? Okay, seeing none? I'm going to go and close, uh, public comments, and, uh, gentlemen, I'll open it up for trustee comments. Mr. Becker?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I appreciated your, uh, opening comments with, uh, you know, this being kind of the gateway to, uh, Mount Carmel and, and particularly this area of Mount Carmel was really in dire need of revitalization, so we really, really appreciate, uh, this happening here.
Well said. Ms. Luke?
Uh, further add, same. Like, we're all very excited about this and, uh, can see a lot, lot to come for Mount Carmel, so we'll just keep on working at it.
Love it. And, uh, want to make it very loud and clear, we're, we're here to help and be, uh, help businesses grow in any way we can, and, uh, but also, helping also means getting out of the way. You know, eliminating red tape so businesses can do what they do best, so.
Chairman, are you trying to say we're from the government, we're here to help?
Absolutely not. Well, unless we're getting out of the way, more so. The, uh, okay, any further discussion?
I said, let's, let's get it out of the way, then.
Yeah, Roger that. Uh, alright, so bear with me, hopefully I don't make a mistake in all these numbers, but I do have to read them. Uh, gentlemen, I will entertain a motion to approve Union Township Zoning Case eight-dash-two-three-dash-O as an Oscar, request for overlay district plan approval for parcels, bear with me, four-one-three-two-one-three-A as an Alpha, one-nine-zero, four-one-three-two-one-three-A as an Alpha, two-zero-six, four-one-three-two-one-three-A as an Alpha, three-one-nine, four-one-three-two-one-three-A as an Alpha, zero-two-zero, four-one-three-two-one-three-A as an Alpha, two-nine-two, four-one-three-two-one-three-A as an Alpha, three-two-four, four-one-three-two-one-three-A as an Alpha, three-two-seven, four-one-three-two-one-three-A A as an Alpha, three-two-five. That's the last one, thank goodness. Totally 1.65 acres of property within the Mount Carmel Business District focus overlay commercial corridor.
Sell that.
Second.
No further discussion. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, sir. Absolutely. Thanks for coming out. Okay, moving on to our next zoning case. Mr. McCormick, stand by for Union Township Zoning Case seven dash two-three dash O as an Oscar. Sir, take it away.
Okay, this case is very far, not really, from the last case. It's actually right across the street at forty-six thirty I. Colts Road. Parcel number is listed here as forty-one thirty-two thirteen B zero seventeen. Total parcel size is six point four three eight acres and its own business, and it's within the same overlay district, which is the Mount Carmel Business District. The site is the old Kroger site that was there on the corner of thirty-two Mount Carmel Tabasco and I. Colts Road. As I mentioned earlier, the volume of traffic on Mount Carmel Tabasco, which is a minor five, minor collector, five lane roadway with about ten thousand two hundred average daily trips in this area. I. Colts is a major collector, three lane roadway with a volume of about forty, two-hundred-and-fifty average trips a day. The site is owned business and the property to the east and west and south is owned business. The property to the north is owned PD. In terms of the items set forth in the conference of plan, they are the exact same things I would have read from the previous staff report. So I'm not going to go over that again. The purposes of the focus areas are referenced in Article thirteen, Section thirteen hundred. And the review process is set forth in Article thirteen, Section thirteen-ten. And specifically, in thirteen oh-seven, we have the focus area commercial corridor district language, which is found at the bottom of page two of the staff report. The background of the site, this is the, a portion of the old Kroger site that is, that is where the applicant is proposing a five thousand nine hundred and fifteen square foot freestanding building. That would be a Wawa and would have corresponding fuel pumps. The lot, the Kroger building would need to be demolished. There would be some leftover acreage and the future plans that involve that acreage would need to be, would need to involve other applications, but we are not looking at any portion of the site except for that northwest portion of the site, which is the southeastern corner of the Mount Carmel Tabasco thirty-two intersection. This is the proposed overlay plan. The proposal appears to be consistent with the recommendations of the adopted land use plan, as well as the findings and specific purposes of the overlay district regulations. This is a view of the proposed elevations. The applicant's proposed building consists of traditional building materials with a signage package. Due to the regulations associated with the corridor, signage would be limited to monument style signage. Parking and driveway areas appear to be sufficient. And the plan follows the existing ingress egress for the vacant Kroger site. There's already existing sidewalk along both I. Colts Road and Mount Carmel Tabasco Road for pedestrian connectivity. Landscaping buffer plan, which I don't have in here, meets the landscaping criteria by shielding the parking areas from the existing roadways. Screen dumpster also meets the standards set forth in the conference of plan along with upgraded gas canopy pillars. Finally, the photometric plan has been included and is consistent with the zoning resolution standards. And set forth in Section thirteen-ten of the zoning resolution, the board's role in this process is to either enter a motion to approve, modify, or deny the overlay district application, which in this case consists of the development of a vehicle fueling station with a retail, convenience retail component as submitted along with any further modifications deemed appropriate by the board. I'll come back to the recommended modifications here in a moment. This is the oblique image, three D kind of image looking north of the entire site. This is looking west from I. Colts Road towards the entrance on the right. This is from the entrance looking east from I. Colts Road. This is looking west from I. Colts Road, the access there. This is across the street, south from the I. Colts access. This is looking into the site from the I. Colts access. You can see the old Kroger building on the right. The site would be kind of there towards the center left portion of the image that you see there. This is looking east from the Mount Carmel Tabasco access towards the site. This is looking west across the street from that Mount Carmel Tabasco access. This is looking north from the Mount Carmel Tabasco access towards thirty-two. And this is looking south from that same access. This is looking west from the backside of that parking lot. You can see the Kroger building there, the old Kroger building to the left. And you can see the Mount Carmel Tabasco access there in the background. This is the approximate area on the right-hand side of the site where the development would take place. As far as any recommended modifications, the applicant would need to address any concerns from related other agencies and departments. They would need to provide anticipated peak and average daily traffic volumes and identify loading and unloading areas. Need to demolish the current vacant store and parking would need, would be, need to be completed before the occupation of proposed development. And we would need a more detailed signage plan. With that, I would see if there are any questions I can try to answer.
I do. It's down. So can you go back to the picture of the overlay? Right there. So I'm looking at this, it's taking up the parking lot. What happens to the Kroger building?
Would have to be demolished.
It's demolished?
Yep. There would be some leftover area there that you see that's not shown here. In the plans that you would have received, they, they did show some other possibilities as far as potential restaurant space or car wash space, but that's really a guess at this point. And we would have to receive applications for that remaining acreage separately.
And is this products, correct me if I'm wrong, but Kroger owns this site, correct?
It is owned by WD Mount Carmel LLC.
That is actually a Kroger subsidiary.
That's what I thought, yeah.
It's from what used to be a Winn-Dixie, but I believe part of this would be a sale, if I'm correct.
So they are selling it?
Yes.
Partially or the entire property?
Don't quote me on this, I believe it's all of it.
All of it, okay.
But again, I would need to get some clarification on that, but it's my understanding this is part of a sale.
Okay. Okay, just wanted to make sure that I understood what we were voting on tonight. Okay. And then can you go over, what were the proposed recommendations in addition that the zoning board?
So those are the, that we had addressed any comments from related other agencies. Applicant would need to provide peak and average daily traffic volumes and identify loading and unloading areas. They would need to commit the demolition of the current vacant store and parking would need to be completed before the occupation of proposed development. And we need a more detailed signage plan.
Okay. Fair enough, perfect. Gentlemen, do you have any questions, Mr. McCormick? No? Good?
No.
Okay, great. Okay, I'm going to go and open up this case. This is a public hearings case, so same thing as before. Union Township Zoning Case seven dash two-three dash O as an Oscar. We will start for anyone that is a proponent, that is for this case, come on up and speak now. Okay, seen, yeah, please, come on up, please, yeah. Okay, let me go and swear you in, sir, if I could? That's okay, yeah, you're fine, you're fine, don't worry about it. Okay, go ahead and raise your right hand for me. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so hope you got?
I do.
Great. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Sean Adams. My address is two thirty-one Cape Sable Drive, Orlando, Florida. I represent the developer for the site. Wawa is, if you'll start the slide presentation. Once you get past the first slide, I hope you don't hold it against us, but it's actually the Native American word for Canadian geese.
Take my shoe off. Can I do that?
That's good.
They make a horrible name, but they make a fantastic sandwich.
Wow.
So, so, you know, there's a, there's a long presentation here, you know, the rest of our team is actually across the town in Colray Township doing exactly this. We're doing a handful of these in the metropolitan area. We're really excited about it. We're Wawa's largest preferred developer. So we've done about thirty-five of them in the central Florida area, all through Florida. Wawa's goal is to be at about, I think it's seventeen hundred stores. Right now, they're about a thousand. So they've tasked us with coming into the market here in the Ohio Valley and taking baby steps and taking very, very careful approach as to the locations that they select. What we've noticed is that a lot of the townships are kind of having a little bit of fun, kind of gamesmanship with who's going to have the first Wawa. So the reason for that is, is that as you'll see, Wawa is an extremely family-friendly oriented organization. Next slide, please. They have a tremendous culture that goes back two hundred years. Actually started in the iron ore business, later transitioned into being a dairy farm. And really, they just added fuel pumps about twenty-five years ago because the actual clientele said, look, we're used to coming to Wawa for everything else. You guys brought milk and everything around back in the horse and buggy days. Can you offer fuel? So, you know, back east where they're based out of, out of Pennsylvania, they're known as just a great restaurant. In fact, they're hoagies because they call them hoagies up there. It's, they rival, you know, any sandwich out there. And they've got this unbelievably weird cult following that has been really fun to watch. I actually moved my family up to Philadelphia for a couple of years when I was on the investment banking side of real estate. And I drove through every day on my way to Philadelphia, this little town called Wawa PA, and I had no idea that it was actually their headquarters. And it's a huge part of, of the culture there in the northeast. And it's something that you'll recognize very, very quickly. When they come to town, they don't, it's not just here, we're going to open up a couple of stores and hope it does well. They move in, they're your neighbor. You're going to see Wawa logos on the back of Little League shirts. You know, they're going to be very engrossed in the neighborhood. They have a really, really, there's a slide on here that you can get to that shows the amount of revenue that each particular Wawa brings on average to a jurisdiction, to a township, something like a million dollars in just construction work in and of itself. You can go to the next slide. One more. That's a pretty picture, but you can go to the next slide as well. Their core values are people, customers, embracing change, doing the right things and doing things right, which you'll learn from them are very different things, and then a passion for winning. As I mentioned, when they come into your neighborhood, it's, it's very much a concentrated effort on where's going to be the best place for a Wawa to do well. And the thing that we hear over and over again, and I'm sure we're hearing it across the town now, is you guys are going to bring in so much traffic, it's going to be so horrible. Wawa doesn't go places to have traffic go there. Wawa, traffic's already there. What they tend to want to do is be in the community and be a place where they can be exactly what they sound like, a convenience store. And oddly enough, believe it or not, in central Florida, where we're all from, in this room, the rest of our team back there, they, they actually offer catering. So it, you'll get some laughs out of your neighbors and friends when you tell them your birthday party is going to be catered by a gas station. And it's, it's a real deal in central Florida. It's phenomenal. You'll be delighted. Anybody who's traveled in the southeast and's been to Wawa will tell you, if you go down there for three or four days, you'll go to Wawa at least four or five times. So it's one of those things that's known for their food in addition to their convenience. Next slide, please. It is a beloved brand. If you can make out the top left corner, that's actually a couple getting married in front of a Wawa. And I tell you, it's a cult following. I mean, it, it happens. It's funny to think about, but people really care about the store and they care about the location. You'll hear people a lot throughout the discussion. They are privately owned and the majority of the company is owned by the employees. They've got roughly forty-five thousand employees right now, and they own the company. So what that means is when they come into your community, that people who are going to be there are owners of the store. They are going to be local people who are looking for employment there, and they pay really, really well. And they build lifetime employees. In fact, the head of their real estate group, who is one of our best contacts there, he started in a store thirty-six years ago. Thought he was just going to make it through college and, you know, make energy and ended up being a place where he has a, one of the top places in the company. So enough about that. I just, we wanted to give you guys a little bit of exposure because we know it's a new brand and we're very conscious of that. We're also very conscious of your time this evening. So if there's other questions, I'd love to answer them. Next slide, please.
I just want to point out, someone has a tattoo of the geese that we've been talking about here.
So if you'd like, I'm sure we can get you a discount on that, on your right shoulder. I hate those things, I strive. I hate those geese as well.
They are the worst things in existence.
Oh, my gosh. And they're sneaky and we can go on all day long.
But it's okay, I like your name, though, so. Thanks, Mark, for pointing that up, by the way.
This is just a quick snapshot of kind of a day in the life of a Wawa. You'll learn to hear hoagies are and sizzlys are. But I will tell you this, one last kind of corny story. When I was, when I moved up to Philadelphia for those couple of years, you know, I would trench, I'd drive every day into the city and I would stop at a Wawa. And it didn't matter if it was, you know, twelve degrees out and rainy or it was a beautiful day. They are just welcoming and warm when you come in. First thing in the morning, there's tons of coffees, tons of creamers, and they just make you feel like you're the only customer. And so you can tell why they want to be in your town. It fits very well with everything that we've seen here tonight. I mean, it's just, it kind of is a natural fit. So I hope you are able to experience that as well. Next slide, please. So the slide on, on the left is what I was talking about as far as the community investment. You know, six million dollars, I can tell you, in today's world, and Mark can tell you, that number is largely understated. Things are so much more expensive now to develop these stores. But it's easily a million dollars just local contractor fees. I tell you, that number is only understated as well. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in other local worker fees and landscape fees. I mean, it's, it's an investment. And we're excited to hear that, what's happening in that corridor, and we hope we can be accretive towards that. The last thing I'll tell you about Wawa from a community standpoint is they're giving back to the Wawa Foundation. That number is actually understated as well. I think it's closer to almost two hundred and fifty million dollars that they've given back. And it's to local groups. It's to workers, frontline workers. It's to organizations that are there helping in the community. They have direct scholarships that they place. I mean, it's not just, hey, fill out a form and, you know, send it to our corporate office. Like, no, they're here, they're on the ground, and you're going to see and feel their presence when they get here. Next slide, please. One of my favorite slides on this, or pictures on this page is the far right one. In Florida, you know, we've got a lot of hurricanes and they have generators at their stores. And when it hits, the last time they actually opened their store and they just loaded tons of ice available for all of our public service employees, firefighters, anybody who could come by, local communities, and they just were just handing out bags of ice and anything that they could do. That's kind of their staple. They love it. They love being part of that backbone that keeps the community thriving in the good times and in the bad. Next slide, please. Fresh food, next slide. Hopefully, you'll have a chance to experience that. We have done in the past where we've done neighborhood meetings, we'll bring up samples of the Wawa food, all non-perishable, but so you get an idea of what that's like. Hopefully, you'll have a chance to experience that as well soon. Next slide. Oh, yeah, last thing I'll mention is that they've got a reputation of being surcharge-free. So go into ATMs, all surcharge-free, you know, free air for your car. I mean, it's just, you'll see a line out the door of people just, just not wanting to pay, you know, a dollar for air and their tire, so they'll go do that. We are also, Wawa is also the largest, what do you call it, electronic vehicle charging tent. So each one of our locations will have at least eight to eleven individual charging stations where cars can come in and charge. At this point, it was Tesla who was the, the major proponent of that. I think we're working it out now, and I've got the Wawa engineer there in the back who can correct it if I'm wrong, to where that would be a universal charging station. But, you know, if you're on your way out in the morning and you got an extra twenty minutes, you want to stop and get a sizzling, a cup of coffee, you forgot to charge, you plug in and you charge the vehicle for twenty minutes and you get on your way. So that's one of the nice perks that we've seen with Wawa's and we've developed up to this point. So I believe that's the end of this slide deck, Mark, if I'm not mistaken, that, things that I think are really relevant to our conversation. I know we have some more technical things to cover. Our engineer, I thought you left him. I was here to answer our question, if you have any outside of that, I'll yield.
I didn't get your name. Can you tell me your name one more time?
Sean Adams.
Adams, okay, Mr. Adams. First off, by the way, I got to swear at each person that speaks up here, just so you know. Mr. Adams, thank you for that presentation, and I do have a couple of questions for you. Did you just fly in from Orlando just for this presentation?
Yes, sir.
When you heading back home? Tomorrow, tonight?
An hour and a half.
Thank you very much.
We got time to buy him a beer.
Appreciate you coming in just for this. That says a lot of devotion. Appreciate you very much. And I was going to ask what type of food you folks, sir, but never mind, you answered that question. I did hear samples. I assume you brought some tonight for?
No, we were on the fence. We were told that would be conceived as maybe...
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding there. The, I, did I, I don't know if I heard this question. So privately owned out of Philadelphia, are these franchises or are these all corporate-owned?
They're all corporate-owned.
Oh, corporate, okay.
Yeah, and so that we, as a developer, would own the land. Wawa is our tenant, right? So they're corporately operated.
So, okay, okay. So you folks buy the land and the property, and they just simply, okay, got it, okay. And, okay, breaking ground. Assuming this passes tonight, when do you plan on breaking ground? When does Wawa plan on breaking ground?
Tomorrow. No, we, as soon as our engineers can get us through the permitting process, as soon as we can get a permit, which we understand could be, you know, the next ninety days. If we get approval, we want to move as fast as we can.
Okay. So same thing as I told the last gentleman, goal is to eliminate red tape as possible. So if we can help you with county permits, anything else, zoning permits, whatever, you know, we'll do everything we can to help you get that streamlined as fast as we can.
Thank you so much.
Last, last question I have for you is, so the Kroger building is going to be gone, right? You're going to demo that. Any, any plans that you know of yet, or is it still up in the air?
You know, we're getting a tremendous amount of interest right now. As soon as word gets out that Wawa's coming, a lot of co-tenants want to be there. So we've gotten LOIs and interest from car wash users, from single-family restaurant users, from quick-service restaurants. And I wouldn't share the names just yet.
It's okay. I get that. Do me a solid. You don't have to, but do me a solid. Please connect with our administrator, and we want to work with you. We want a home run. And again, we want to make sure everything is as easy as for you as possible, but we would like to help you in any way we can, even if that means, like I said before, just getting out of the way. But if we can help you, love to get a home run tenant there with you as well and get a deal done for you guys, so.
We appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Okay, this is very, I don't know if you've heard it all, but I mean, Mount Carmel, that area where you're, that's where, so that's called Mount Carmel. That's really been on our hearts and minds as trustees, and this is a big help for those folks over there. It's, I, it's, we want it to be a slam dunk, and so whatever we can do as well, but if we can help you get a tenant in there, one, that's really a good one for that community. Love to help you with that.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, did you have anything else from Mr. Adams at all? Please go ahead, sir.
Yeah, we really appreciate what you're doing here. This is a game changer for Mount Carmel. As the chairman says, it's something we've been focused on. So, you know, we really, really very much appreciate this. A couple of things. You mentioned EV charging stations. It's something I have a personal interest in. I got, I got a, an EV vehicle on, on order. Are these going to be three hundred and fifty amp, or do you have any details on, on the power of these things, superchargers?
So I don't know exactly. The last time I checked, it was going to be a level three, but that's when it was Tesla. I don't know if that's changed now. I'm going to bring you this one.
I think that is the most, what the new generation is, is it level three. And so when this question came up before, it was just, they're still working on it, it's still up in the air, but they like being on the, on the cutting edge in innovation. They said, I would put our money on it being level three.
Okay. And the other thing I had was, looking over the menu items, I didn't see a goose sandwich. We can help you out with...
We can't help you out with that.
Only at Thanksgiving.
We can collect all the geese you need for sandwiches.
You're still leaning.
It's all you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Loog, anything? Yeah, so I frequented the Wawa Lakewood Ranch. So, yeah, it's, it's exciting to be able to have Wawa here, here in our township. So we're very grateful that you're, you're bringing this here. And, yeah, it's just going to be nice to have that right down the road, and have our park around the corner, and have the pickleball around the corner, and it's going to go hand in hand very well. Likewise, connecting with Ms. Ayers for the, referencing, you know, the right type of tenants that will go in there. She's pushed out some surveys, community feedback. We've got a really good insight as to what the community is interested in, what will be home runs, at least framework-wise. So happy to be able to share that type of conversation with you. So I think that would be really great. And then on that same note, too, just around the corner from your recognized community investment, and some of the organizations you like to work with and support, and access to, to fresh food, there's Inter Parish Ministries, a food shelter, and Boys and Girls Club and Child Focus are right around the corner. And again, likewise, Mr. Chairman brought up last meeting about interest in a 5K or something going on, but we can see that in our mind for the Mount Carmel corridor there, that some type of community engagement. So it's something to share to, you know, the people that will actually be executing on the ground when they're there, but I think it's going to be a great opportunity to be able to, to really embrace that community involvement.
I think you'd be hard pressed to not have them at the next police night out. I'm sure that that's, I mean, that's right up the alley. They just wrapped up a huge backpack kind of giveaway for school supply drive. They do that in every market that they're in, where they'll have stations set up where, you know, there's one pins and pads and rulers and what have you, and the community comes out and builds backpacks and gives them to the children. It's just, it's, it's what they do. I'm telling you, you're going to, you're going to really enjoy having them as a neighbor.
Yeah. That, that's, that's great to hear. There's a local school just north of there, Somerside Elementary, and, yeah, I personally worked with a group. Mr. Becker's on the board of, did a hundred and fifty Christmases, basically, for, for students, and when you look at what's on that Christmas list, it's, it's the basics. So, so, yeah, really great opportunity for community involvement there. So, yeah, again, we just really appreciate that. Look forward to the next ninety days, make it sixty days if we can. But no, it's exciting. And I also hear often the gripes about people that do have EVs that don't have any type of superchargers around here. There's only one in Norwood, is what I'm told. And, and so anyway, that would be a huge home run, just to have, you know, I, me, I'm a personal fan of gas engines, but I understand, you know, opportunity.
So we worked at one at the airport, and it took us seven minutes to figure out how to back out as a Tesla. Honestly, and we still don't know how to turn the thing off. This is probably running right now. I'm a gas guy myself, but... Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
I assume the answer's yes, but is there any issues with the proposed recommendations from our zoning board?
No.
No? Perfect. That's all you can hear. Thank you, Mr. Adams. Safe travels back to all of you. Thank you very much. And then, did anybody else like to speak as far as a proponent for this case? All good? Okay, moving on as far as opponent. Is there anyone against this zoning case? Okay, seeing none. Gentlemen, I'll open up a board discussion. Mr. Becker?
Oh, I, I love it. Like I said, this is a game changer. I'm very excited about them being here. I didn't know anything about Wawa. I'm not even sure I've ever even heard of them until, until they submitted the proposal. And what I heard tonight was, you know, all new information for me, and I, I really love it and very excited about it being here. I mean, when, you know, when Kroger pulled out, that was very painful for Mount Carmel. Made business sense, good sense for Kroger to do that, because they're, they're building a new superstore about a mile from there. And, you know, so that, that empty building has been a sore spot, and, you know, getting rid of that and having this Wawa coming in, we're just super excited about it. Thank you. Thank you so much. That's it.
Mr. Loog?
No, I mean, I just, just covered it there. So, yeah, it is, it's, it's very exciting. Can't wait to, I honestly just can't wait to be able, you know, my wife, my wife's excited, too, and in-laws are excited. They're the ones that are down in Florida most often, so it's aha, you know, you got a reason to come visit us, so come on. So it's, it's really good, so, and we're excited. Thank you.
Love it. Love it. It's going to be good. All good. All right, gentlemen, I'm going to entertain a motion for approval. The Union Township Zoning Case seven dash two-three dash O is an Oscar. Request for overlay district plan approval for parcel number four-one-three-two-one-three B as in Bravo zero-one-seven totaling two-point-zero-nine-one acres located within the Mount Carmel Business District Focus Overlay Commercial Corridor with proposed recommendations.
So moved.
Second.
No discussion. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loog?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you for coming to our neighborhood. Truly grateful. Absolutely. Thank you, folks, very much. Safe travels back, okay? And bring some of that Florida weather up here.
Too hot.
The, let's look here. All right, next, our last zoning case of the evening. Make an okay timing, gentlemen. And Union Township Zoning Case six dash two-three dash O is an Oscar. Mr. McCormick, last one for you, sir. Go ahead.
Yes, this is for an applicant Alpha LLC. Site location is forty-four fourteen I Colts Road. Parcel number's forty-one thirty-one oh-five A one-thirty-seven. It's approximately one-point-two-nine-four acres. Zone business in the central retail commercial corridor focus area. The location is on the corner of I Colts and East Gate Boulevard on the northern northeastern portion of that intersection. East Gate Boulevard is a major collector five-lane roadway with a traffic volume of approximately fifteen thousand five hundred trips a day in that area. I Colts has, is three lanes and has about forty-two-hundred-and-fifty trips a day in that area. Zoning of the property to the north, northwest, northeast is business, and everywhere else otherwise is zone PD. The, in our, the comprehensive plan, the plan indicates that the property's in the central retail corridor, contains a variety of commercial business uses, and it continues to remain the primary commercial area within the township for new development activities, including infill development, remaining steady. Among other things, the plan calls for architectural standards that promote cohesive and attractive design and enhance quality of life. Sidewalks in the area, shared driveway and parking configurations wherever practical, and site development to be conducted in a manner that focuses on maximizing land use efficiency with infill development. For commercial development, the use of traditional building materials, adequate vegetative buffering, landscaping strategies along shared property lines, and landscaping enhancements along the corridor, are needed is also required. And Article thirteen, Section thirteen-hundred, we have the purpose of the focus overlay districts outlined. Section thirteen oh-seven, which is in the bottom page of, page two of the staff report, we have the finding specific purpose and characteristics of the commercial corridor districts. Section thirteen-ten outlines the process for the review of the focus overlay plans and the board's role. In terms of the site information, we have the site with the topography shown on this slide. It's currently a vacant property. The applicant's proposing a four thousand nine-hundred-and-sixty-eight square foot freestanding building with corresponding fuel pumps in the vacant parcel. And, and the proposed building is considered, from what we've seen so far, a high-quality primary structure consisting of traditional building materials with a new sidewalk along East Gate Boulevard and with a landscaping plan forthcoming, which we do not have yet. I made a call again about today. This is the proposed overlay of the site. There would be a right-in, right-out from East Gate Boulevard, a right-in only on I Colts, and otherwise a full access off of East Gate Pavilion, Pavilion Shopping Center Drive there, north of the site. And this is a kind of a blow up of the plan. Review of the application indicates the proposal appears to be consistent with the recommendations of the land use plan as well as the overlay district zoning regulations. The applicant has proposed the primary structure that does have traditional building materials for the elevations we've seen. However, we do need more information to make proper determinations regarding the proposed signage and gas canopy designs. I mentioned that how the site would be accessed, and the access has, I've received information from the engineer that was forwarded to us. They are amenable to the access points that have been discussed and shown so far. As the original configuration, the, there was not an access to the rear drive that connects to I Colts. When the engineer's office had the weight in on the access, the applicant was, and the applicant was accessing that rear drive, the building was moved over towards I Colts so that the setback would be less than what is required in the B-one districts. However, staff doesn't see that as a problem, and if you look at the area, you'll see that the building across that East Gate Pavilion Shopping Center is even closer probably than, than what is proposed here, if not very similar. It looks like it's closer. This is a slide that shows the elevations that we have so far. The proposed parking driveway areas for the plan appear to be sufficient. Sidewalk, like as I mentioned, is proposed along East Gate Boulevard for pedestrian activity. Photometric plan has been included with some minor adjustments needed in the northeastern areas of the property where new lighting is proposed. We still need the landscaping plan, as I mentioned, and the proposed dumpster would need to be properly screened. As far as the other photos that we have, this is the oblique imagery looking north, kind of a three-dimensional view. This is looking northeast from East Gate Boulevard toward, from the, what would be probably the right-in, right-out area. This is looking southwest along East Gate Boulevard towards I Colts. This is looking from that same area towards the site, from west to northwest, left to right. This is looking southwest from that intersection. You can see where there's sidewalk crossing there. This is looking west across I Colts Road. You can see there's a striped area there along I Colts where the right-in would eventually potentially be allowed only. This is looking northwest towards the rear of the site at that adjacent drive. And this is looking to the north, a little more to the right of the previous picture, towards what would be the access, main access to the site. This is looking northeast from the site towards the adjacent property along East Gate Boulevard. This is looking from the site towards East Gate Boulevard, towards that right-in, right-out area. In terms of the required action, in terms of Section thirteen-ten, the board's role is at process of either to enter motion to approve, modify, or deny the overlay district application, which in this case consists of the development of a fueling, vehicle fueling station with a convenience retail component as submitted along with any other modifications deemed appropriate by the board. The recommended modifications by staff would be to address any concerns from related other agencies and departments, to provide anticipated peak and average daily traffic volumes, identify loading and unloading areas, need a detailed approvable landscaping plan, including the types of plantings along with the heights and sizes recommended along the western edge of the property as well as the perimeter of the proposed dumpster enclosure. We need a revised lighting plan for the northeastern areas. We need architectural details for the rear insides of the primary structure and also the gas canopy area, including the pillars. We need a more detailed signage plan, and we need some additional minor administrative items that are listed there in item seven of the staff report at the very end. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Could you just throw the, the overhead picture up? Yeah. Where's the, where's the Comfort Hotel? Right there?
The hotel's over here.
Got it. Okay. Just kind of, I see. Okay.
The main access would be, two-way access would be here, right-in, right-out would be here, and the proposed right-in at this point on I Colts is right here.
Got it. Got it, okay. Gentlemen, any questions for Mr. McCormick?
Nope.
No? Good, great. Okay, this is a zoning case, same as the last two. Union Township Zoning Case six dash two-three dash O is an Oscar. I'll go ahead and open for public comments. We'll start for anyone that is a proponent of this case. Does anyone like to speak tonight that is for this case? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone that is an opponent of this case, that is against this? Last call. All right, seeing none, go ahead and close that down. Trustee comments. Mr. Becker, sir?
I'm for it. Don't let any comment beyond that. You know, I'd like to see the new construction, bringing in additional business, creating jobs, competition. Looks like it's in a good spot.
Mr. Loog, anything?
That's been a vacant corner there for probably ever. So, yeah, nice to have something there that is going to be utilized, and obviously, the, the union that's going in across the street, there's going to be more utilization there as you get into Ivy Point Boulevard. So I think the, the more broad options that we have throughout the township for fuel, et cetera, it's going to help at least spread out the traffic in locations where people are frequently using and getting their services, so it's good. Nothing, nothing further on the, on the presentation?
I agree. I think the folks from TQL, from Children's Hospital, will utilize it a lot. There's nothing else we can, I mean, yeah, I mean, that's, it's got, it's got to be business. Something else that can go there, so. Okay. No further discussion, gentlemen. I will entertain a motion for Union Township, motion for approval for Union Township Zoning Case six dash two-three dash O is an Oscar. Request for overlay district plan approval for parcel number four-one-three-one-zero-five[1654.87] for parcel number four, one, three, one, zero, five, A is an alpha, one, three, seven, totaling one point two nine four acres located within the central retail state route thirty two focus area overlay commercial corridor with proposed recommended modifications.
So moved.
Second.
No further discussion. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, gentlemen, we are eight oh four PM. Are we good? Is everyone good? Do we need to recess slightly, or are we good to keep moving forward?
I'm good if we press.
Good?
I'm good.
Good?
Yep.
We're good, all right, we'll, we'll press through. Old business. Gentlemen, any old business you'd like to discuss? What's up?
Nothing.
All good?
Just trying to get back on the.
Okay.
I have none.
All right. New business, our consent agenda item, something we added on last month, I like it. Gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion for our consent agenda. I'll go over those very quickly. Approval of minutes, July eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, regular meeting minutes, July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, regular session meeting minutes. Item B is approval of payments as prepared by our fiscal officer, Mr. Ron Campbell. Item C is approval of our monthly financial report as prepared by our wonderful fiscal officer, Ron Campbell. Last item is, item D, establish two thousand twenty-three Union Township fall junk days for October nineteenth through the twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, Thursday and Friday, seven AM to five PM, and Saturday, eight AM to three PM. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, gentlemen? No discussion? Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
My goodness, my, glad we added that consent agenda on, makes things a lot easier. Next item is motion agenda, let me look here. Miss Ayers, approval of our purchase orders of exceeding ten thousand dollars. Can you go over this for us, please?
Thank you. First matters to ClearGov Inc. for digital budget book subscription services for twenty-three, twenty-four, for eleven thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. Second is KZF Design for Engineering Services, amount of sixteen thousand dollars. Claremont County Treasurer for Local Funding Match on the Glen Estee Withersville Overpass Project, thirty, state route thirty-two, sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighteen cents. Next matters to TQL for Economic Development Agreement reimbursement for July twenty-twenty-three in the amount of twenty-four thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-six cents. Then we have Dell Marketing for Patrol Computers, thirty-six thousand, two hundred and ten dollars and seventy-four cents. Finally, American Rock Salt Company for Road Salt, amount of two hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Ayers. Mr. Becker, what questions do you have, sir?
What makes you think I'd have a question? Ah, yes, Chief Reese, Patrol Computers for thirty-six thousand, two ten, what's, what's going on there?
Well, these are next gen computers, the ones that we've got currently in our patrol cars, that's what allows us to go wireless, I'm sorry to go paperless. They've basically outseated their life. The batteries in them, the Wi-Fi's in them, the computers that we are purchasing are next gen, they will have better batteries in them, we won't need the MiFi's. And the best part about it is we're utilizing our drug forfeiture fund, so not, not technically Union Township money, just one of those purchases that we have to make about every five, six, seven years.
Hold on, say it one more time, where's the funds coming from?
Our drug forfeiture fund that we can tap into, that we share with the county and other people that participate.
Well done, so it's not directly from our taxpayer, general fund?
Correct.
Outstanding, love that. Sorry, Mr. Becker, go ahead.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Side question for, for both you chiefs. So we're in August, just a few more months left in the year, is there any purchases that either one of you gentlemen are expecting that's substantial, that's out of the ordinary that you're expecting that needs to be thought, that we need to think about in the head time? Not to throw you guys both on the spot, but I just thought of it.
Chief?
No, sir.
Taxpayers appreciate that?
In twenty twenty-three, Mr. Dills. Are you asking me in twenty twenty-three?
For, for this year, for this year.
No, sir.
Nothing, okay, fair enough, okay, great. Mr. Luke, any questions?
Ms. Ayers, will you share just a minute on the budget book?
Yes. One of the initiatives I've been trying to push forward is getting some more detailed and developed budgeting for the township and making it more visible to residents. As part of this, Cindy White and Mr. Campbell's office found some software through ClearGov that will help create and streamline the process for creating a digital budget book that we can display on our website, provide some more information to the public, that feeds directly from our accounting software, so it will greatly streamline the budgeting effort, and I'm pretty excited about it.
Well, thank you, Ms. Ayers, that, I think that, that, I looked that up on ClearGov, and I think that really hits on the, the vision that I've had for how we start to communicate what's going into the budget and gets a communication tool to the residents, so we can really hit on that transparency, accountability, and communication, so I'm, I'm excited to see that. A lot of, a lot of great big steps we've been taking with the township, and so thank you to you and the staff, Mr. Campbell, thank you for what you guys have continued to do, delivering on, you know, from day one, I think, there with the Ohio checkbook, so it's great to be able to see these programs that interface with each other and get the information out there, so thank you for that.
Mr. Taylor, last, last item I have is the rock salt after this purchase, are we good to go, you think, for the year? Obviously, if we have ma- major winter storms, you know, that could be more, but for the average winter, are we good to go now?
Yes, sir.
Perfect.
This will, obviously, this will set us up for basically the winter of twenty twenty-three going into twenty twenty-four.
So we're, we're good to go on rock salt after this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect. Gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of purchase orders exceeding two thousand dollars as prepared by our administrator, Ms. Susan Ayers.
So moved.
Second.
No further discussion. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is establish policy regarding new employee sick leave transfer. Ms. Ayers, can you please explain that?
Thank you, sir. One of the items I've been working on is updating our employee policy procedure manual. I don't believe this has really been done in earnest since two thousand fourteen, so I anticipate by the end of the year we'll have some updated policies for you to look at. This is one part of that process that has come up. Currently, when we hire employees in that have service credits from other public agencies, there's always a question about whether or not they can transfer sick leave into the service of the township. Ohio revised code for comparison indicates that municipalities and townships with civil service commissions are required to take civil, to take sick leave accumulated at another employer when you come to work for a new public employer. So for example, when you go to work for the city of Cincinnati or something, if you have accumulated sick leave in the Ohio system, they would transfer that with you, it would be portable. There is no specific requirement for township, so we can effectively set our own policy in this matter. We are asking and recommending that we adopt a policy that we allow new employees to transfer in up to two hundred hours from prior service. This is a matter of staying competitive in the workforce, we're competing with people that could go to places like municipalities, and losing that benefit could be a concern moving forward. But without a policy in place, we've had some questions about selective enforcement and what different people handle, so this is a matter of trying to get a consistent policy that matches our desire to stay competitive in the marketplace, but also not completely accept everyone, another jurisdiction's liability, so trying to find the balance that allows employees to bring in hours they've accumulated, but not unduly burden the township.
Thank you for that explanation. Chiefs, it's been really easy to recruit these days, right? That was sarcasm, by the way. So, I think this will be a lot easier for us to recruit and be competitive, so I think it's a no brainer. Gentlemen, do you have any question at all for Ms. Ayers?
No, just a, just a one comment, I'd really like the improvement and being competitive, sorry.
Gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to establish policy regarding a new employee sick leave transfer that allows employees to transfer limited sick leave hours from other appropriate public entities.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Cool. All right, next item is our legislative agenda, resolution two zero, two, three, dash, three, zero, which would be a resolution continuing a moratorium on medical marijuana related to businesses in Union Township. Ms. Ayers, can you explain that for us, please?
Thank you, sir. This is our third extension of this legislation. We've previously been operating without any regulations on the medical marijuana businesses within the township. Two times ago, we adopted a resolution that put a moratorium or a temporary stop on new businesses opening up in the township related to medical marijuana. We discussed in our last work session extending that one more time for the limited purposes of determining how state regulation is going to go with regarding medical marijuana and being able to get some time to understand those rules if it were to change. So this would simply keep the status quo for another period of one hundred and eighty days.
Thank you. Gentlemen, I'll make sure I'm very logical on this part, this is my last time I'm going to vote yes to approve this moratorium. The November ballot, did they get enough signatures, do we know?
They have not sort of, I didn't, I had not seen.
Officially, okay, so.
I don't know if it's official, but, you know, they have.
They, they needed six hundred and seventy-nine, they submitted, I believe it was four thousand or more signatures, so the anticipation is they're going to get there.
So, our opinion on this may be moot, based on the way the vote happens at the November election, so we'll see what the language is in that, what it passes, what that means by law. However, I'm just going to go on record, this is the last time I vote to extend this, and then after that, I will put us on the spot, and I'll call for a vote to either allow medical marijuana dispensaries in our township anymore, or completely put a permanent moratorium in place, just so I'm, I'm very clear on the record. Mr. Becker, do you have any thoughts on yourself?
No.
Mr. Lo?
No.
Great. Gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion for resolution two zero, two, three, dash, three, zero, resolution continuing a moratorium on medical marijuana related to businesses in Union Township for an additional one hundred and eighty days.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, second, the last item here, gentlemen, is resolution two zero, two, three, dash, three, one, resolution approving issuance of sale of various bonds. Ms. Ayers, can you explain that, please?
Thank you, sir. As you are aware, the township holds debt, as most governments do. We have been previously, I believe since two thousand seven or two thousand eight, in a financial plan that involved us refinancing our debt annually in bond anticipation notes, and then engaging in a swap transaction to help mitigate any problems with the interest rates and the volatility in the interest rates. We review with our advisory team annually just to see what the status is, if that's still the best move for the township. This year, we are in an odd circumstances where the interest rates are such that we believe it is now best to terminate that situation and move into what is a more traditional long-term financing. With recommending this move to a standard financing, we are not extending the life of the debt, it will still run the same amount of years, but it will be a traditional single refinance this year, so that we are not going through this exercise annually. We have been in the process of permanently looking at the interest rates, we are getting very competitive rates, so we believe the transaction makes sense, saves us some volatility in the market, some concerns about the interest rate risk, and also annual refinancing comes to the table with a fair amount of fees every year, and this will help mitigate those fees. So we believe it's best at this time to allow the termination of the current swap deal and movement into a more traditional financing deal. If you have additional questions, Andy Brosart and Pat Woodside are here, who've been advising us on this matter, but we are working on their recommendation, and when I've looked at, this is the best move for the township, will save us some money long-term and eliminate some of the risk that we've had moving forward.
Perfect. I forget, which one of you did I speak with on the phone? Great job explaining it to me, you really dumbed it down for me, so, I need that sometimes, so no, makes sense, I appreciate your recommendation. Gentlemen, any questions for Ms. Ayers? Mr. Becker?
Mr. Lo? No.
Great, okay, perfect. Gentlemen, I'll entertain, oh, did you, did you need them to speak at all, Ms. Ayers?
No, they are here if you have any questions, and make sure we understand exactly what we're getting into.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution two zero, two, three, dash, three, run, resolution approving issuance of sale of various bonds.
So moved.
Second.
No further discussion?
Yeah, I do.
Oh, please go.
I just want to make a comment, so I think this, we've had a couple of discussions on this, I guess, over the last year and a half. I think this is the, the bond anticipation note ban, I think that's what this is called, and this is the, Ms. Ayers said it's a, it's a interest rate swap with RBC, Royal Bank of Canada, it's a derivative, very complex item, way above my head. So, you know, to go to something more straightforward, I, I do like that, and of course, with the, with the market, this is something I was very concerned about for, for quite a while in terms of our exposure to this particular debt instrument with interest rates going up. So getting to a more traditional note or, or bond, I think is a good thing, and just kind of is, and aside, something I'm looking forward to is, I guess, more of a long-term goal for the township is getting completely out of debt. I wanted to see us, you know, eventually start paying this stuff down and becoming debt-free.
Well said, Mr. Becker. Any further discussion?
Just, yeah, Mr. Becker, you highlighted this early on, talking about tracking the library rates, and then that changed, and, you know, so I want to thank you for, you know, how, how you closely have watched that, but then also, Ms. Ayers, thank you to you and, and engage in Andy and his team, because I know my discussions with Andy, it was, the township was kind of in a funny, I'll just say, simple for me, a funny position where every single year it was essentially refinancing this package, and now we can establish something that's more long-term, and we finally got the right opportunity, the right timing, so, you know, again, I think, Mr. Becker, dress, watching and paying attention to the concern, Ms. Ayers being on it twenty-four, seven, and, and being able to execute on that with Andy and the team, I think that's really great, and it's, it's a good forward look for, for us. And Mr. Becker, I'm on the same page with you for getting the township out of all debt, so it'd be a nice, nice place to be, and let's strategically get there, so thank you.
That's it. Great. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, gentlemen, last resolution, we're wrapping up. Resolution two zero, two, three, dash, three, two, nuisance abatement resolution, Ms. Ayers, did you need to explain that all?
This is our traditional, we've seen fairly regularly about properties that have been a concern for taking, being taken care of mainly township. This will allow us to start the abatement process, assess on the property taxes if properties are not resolved.
Ms. Ayers, I assume, I always ask this question, just because I want to cover it, I assume Mr. Burke, he's one of our finest employees, he did his job, you know, exhausting all efforts.
It's correct.
Is this basically, what is it? What, are you a picture there? Okay, see, yeah, yeah. Got it, Roger that. Any questions at all for Ms. Ayers?
No, but I did pull up a picture, if you look at Google Maps.
It's gonna be Christmas.
That's what it looked like back in November, when I took that photo.
I, I truly, yeah, I'm always sensitive about these things, guys, I just, I hope, I hope it's somebody that's not elderly, things like that, you know, someone that's ill, or, you know, fill in the blank, or they're just, they don't have enough money to take care of, and they're old, I, I don't, fill in the blank, I just hate that, but, but if it's, but if it's someone that's blatantly doing this, that just doesn't give two cents about their property, then, hey, we got to take care of you in the township.
We make all efforts to address the people that need help. If it is a matter of you are physically unable or financially unable, then we will make every effort to work with you and not put you in this position.
Absolutely.
If we get to this point, it is because we don't feel like there's much other option.
Yeah, we can't, we got to make sure the township stays up, so I get it completely.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
I got one other comment here, I believe the way this is written on the agenda is the incorrect address. It says four eighty-seven Powderhorn, I believe it's forty-eight seventeen.
That's correct, yeah, forty-eight seventeen.
Forty-eight seventeen Powderhorn.
And, and, Ms. Ayers let me know that before as well, so, yep, yep, all good, so, all good. Any, any further questions for Ms. Ayers? Pretty country, all right. Gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion for resolution, to approve resolution two zero, two, three, dash, three, two, nuisance abatement resolution, authorizing the abatement control or removal of vegetation, garbage, refuse or debris, refuse, I'm sorry, debris pursuant to section five, zero, five, point, eight, seven of the Ohio Revised Code at the following property, forty-eight seventeen Powderhorn Drive, Cincinnati, four, five, two, four, four.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Gentlemen, wraps it up. Four comments from the board. Mr. Becker, vice chair, would you like to go first?
Sure, I guess the one concern I have, and Ms. Ayers and I talked about this in the past, and it, gentleman brought it up earlier, I believe it was, uh, Mr. Miller, having to do with an address over on Kitty Lang, where they're running a generator. So the information I was given on this particular situation is that they have, their, their electricity got cut off, because they have a, I think I was told, six thousand dollar utility bill, something ridiculous, they can't pay it. I don't know, so I don't know if that's true, or what, what exactly are the facts here, but that's why they're running a generator twenty-four, seven, and it kind of begs the question, gasoline costs a heck of a lot more than electricity buying off the grid. I guess one of my concerns is that, is there, is this a humanitarian problem that maybe a county agency needs to get involved in? Because, I mean, obviously, it's not normal for somebody to be running a generator twenty-four, seven, like, what's going on here? So that's my only concern, that particular property.
Mr. Lo, is there anything, any public comments, or any comments from you?
Yeah, just quickly touch on, well, we just wrapped up with the infrastructure with, with roads, I think that was great, doing nearly five miles, so I, you know, hope that we can continue to have a strategic plan on that moving forward year after year. I don't know what the right figure is going to be, but I know a hundred and thirty-two miles of road, a hundred and thirty-three miles of road, that it always needs to be more than one mile per year, so, so that, that's one thing. And then, gentlemen, I just, I really liked our last working session, thought it had a lot of opportunity for additional public comment opportunities, a lot of subjects that we covered, we covered a lot.
on a lot of subjects that we covered. We covered a lot. Um, you know, again, I think in that same vein, I really like the format that we've done with the meetings overall, public comment upfront, now the consent agenda. Um, so thank you for embracing those, those changes and, and bringing that forward. Um, and then, um, you know, also, again, I just really appreciate the, 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 the new website still. Had a resident ask me the other day about, uh, what's the volleyball place, you know, they're off a round bottom, and I was able to just type in volleyball in the search function on, on Union Township's website. And I got all the information. I mean, it was unreal. And you know, you guys, you know, you dug around in the past on the old websites, you know how that, you wouldn't have been able to do that. Um, so, uh, if you haven't, uh, just gone and searched something or, or started to use more of the, uh, the tools that are there. And also, I think, share to residents, people that you talk to, go take a look at the website and subscribe, sign up for agendas, sign up for the meeting notices. So I think we should really, you know, I think I might have been subscriber number one, but I think we need to, um, you know, an area that we need to kind of focus on moving forward. And again, it's gonna be able to leverage that infrastructure that we just took the time and energy to get in place. And I think it's gonna reap, uh, a lot of great benefits for the township and communication with the residents.
Well said, Mr. Logue. Mr. Becker, to go to your comments about that property running the generator, I mean, I used to hide this fact, but I don't anymore. It's just part of my testimony. Um, I grew up very poor, single mom, it's me, my mother, my sister growing up. Um, before I pass any judgment on those folks, uh, yeah, I mean, I've been there, done that. I, I get it. You, and I know three, three fifty per gallon, uh, but that's a lot cheaper at that specific moment than, or electric bill that continues to add up. So, yeah, before, yeah, like you said, well, well said on the humanitarian efforts, 'cause we have no idea. So, yeah, and it's, it gets toasty out there and, uh, especially at nighttime, you know.
And I'm making a assumption using gas. I, I don't know what they got. They, they get a, I mean, I've got, I've got a natural gas generator at home, so. And that's, could be a whole lot cheaper than gaslings. So I don't know what they're doing there, but whatever it is, it's highly unusual.
Yeah, I'd like to check into it. Um, Ms. Ayers, do we have Mr. Berkey on that? Who, who needs to check into that?
Um, Chief Reese Meyer, uh, having some worries with that, and we've already had some discussions with some of the county agencies.
Now, if they're just running crap, we're running crap, and we need to take care of that. But if they truly have humanitarian problem, then let's, let's have soft words for that.
Indeed.
Gentlemen, this is the end of summer. Bummer. It's our last meeting until September. We have two meetings in September, correct? Or no?
We have one more working session.
We have one working session this month, that's correct. Okay. And do, and so are we going to have time, can we vote on our commercial vehicles in September? Or I'm sorry, in this month of the working session, or is that till September?
We'll need to, I'll get you some information out on that. The concern is making sure that we have the right timing between, um, everyone that needs to hear it. Um, so we'll see and make sure we clarify, but it'll be on as soon as we possibly can.
I'd be in favor if we can put in the working session for this month, but if not, that's okay.
It is more a matter of timing, just to make sure.
No problem.
Mr. McCormick and I have the right timing than anything else.
Um, yeah, end of summer. Um, you know, I know, I'm the, trust me, I'm the first one to complain, but I also think it'll be beautiful when it's all done in, in two-ish, three years of all this construction that's going on, but I, let's not focus on that. Guys, we got our first annual fishing tournament, pickleball tournament, uh, we have movie nights out now. Um, you know, let the people bring their families to the dog, to, to the parks, which include their dogs, you know, dog parks going up. Uh, a lot of good things we did this year and, uh, this summer. So I hate to, summer's my favorite month, so, our favorite time of the year. So, but, uh, great, great stuff. That concert, Mr. Logue, by the way, our condolences to your, to your cousin passing away, but, uh, truly, I mean.
Thank you. Sorry to miss that.
Uh, that, that concert was unique, uh, to Union Township. It was definitely different and, uh, much needed, brought a lot of energy, a lot of energy, so, on Friday night.
It even got me dancing.
It did. You know what? I didn't tell you this, Mr. Becker. I took a ten-second video of you dancing. I'll send it to you. Maybe I'll hold it against you.
I'll buy it from you so that you get it on Facebook.
Oh, goodness, good stuff. All right, let's go ahead and, uh, anything else?
No, that's just funny. Yep, that's good.
Okay, here is, uh, upcoming in our township, free concert at our amphitheater right behind here, uh, The Casino Players, the music of Frank Sinatra, The Rat Pack on August twelfth, uh, at seven thirty PM. Free play performance of The Comedy of Errors by the Cincinnati Shakespeare, uh, on August nineteenth at seven PM. And thank you, big thanks to Jungle Gyms and also Crossroads, because we've got our fireworks coming up August twenty-sixth. Uh, let's see, Touch a Truck. And Ms. Ayers, are, are we able to get, uh, food trucks out there as well this year?
Um, we have had some discussions. There will be limited food trucks. We would like to encourage everyone to, uh, patronize the businesses that are located there. LaRoses will be open. There'll be some, the Highway Fifty-five Burgers, the Ring Cone will be open, and encourage people to patronize those.
I say that because, uh, if, if we can encourage those businesses to maybe set up a cart or something of some sort, because one major gripe I had was, where's all the food trucks at? There's all these people here. And so, um, for example, it's all in, it's all in Jungle Gyms parking lot. I'm not saying that folks are lazy, but to walk all the way over to RJ's and to go back, it's just kinda like, I'd like to have some food trucks, even if it's with those existing businesses of some sort, even if it's carts, I'd be okay with that. Um, but, uh, we'll have our Touch a Truck out there for our fire trucks, a lot of police vehicles out there. Uh, free movie showing Cars, uh, at the Civic Center Gym. That's right. I forgot we did that at the gym this year. Is it, is it still on?
I'm gonna try one in the gym. Um, I'd like to.
I like it.
We're gonna set the time a little bit different to see if that helps families out. I've heard one, um, feedback that perhaps some of the movies have been a little late when they're outside for families with young children. And, uh, given the weather, we'll see how it goes once in the gym and see how that goes.
Problem is lighting. I mean, the, the sun's still bright and shiny, eight o'clock, eight-thirty, nine o'clock at night.
Absolutely, absolutely. But I thought we'll try one and see how this goes.
Cool, love it, love it. Uh, September ninth, okay. Uh, our next business meeting will be September twelfth, uh, so, uh, right here at, uh, six PM, like usual, second Tuesday of the month. And then, uh, our working session will be two weeks from today, August twenty-second, six PM. Uh, that is all. Gentlemen, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
No further discussion. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Were adjourned at eight thirty-one PM.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you all for attending. Appreciate you very much. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.